We'll call the meeting to order for Wycomico County Council Legislative Session 2025-09 for May 6, 2025. Those that like to stand and join us in the Lord's Prayer and Pledge of Allegiance, please do.
Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. And give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. Thy love is kingdom, the power, and the Lord forever. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the God of the United States of America and to the republic for which he stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Entertained a motion from council to approve the consent agenda.
Move.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion or corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, consent agenda passes unanimously. The first item we have on the agenda, we have several proclamations, which is a good thing. First proclamation we have is to recognize National Correction Officers Week as May 4th through the 10th, 2025. I think Chris Tyler is here, there she is, who is our Director of the Department of Corrections, and it's going to be presented by Vice President Jeff Merritt over here. You can bring whoever you want. If you brought a lot of backup, you can bring them too. This is a very efficient, this is a, there they are, oh my gosh.
Just so y'all are aware, this is the safest building in Wycomico County right now. Thank you all for coming.
This is an extremely efficient department too in Wycomico County, trust me. They do great work.
You know how safe I feel right now? So, good evening, everybody. As President Cannon said, May 4th through 10th is National Correctional Officers Week. It's my honor to present this proclamation and read it. Whereas correctional officers have the difficult and often dangerous assignment of ensuring the custody, safety, and well-being of inmates, and their position is essential to the day-to-day operations of correctional facilities, and whereas the duties of correctional officers are increasingly complex and demanding, and the professionalism, dedication, and courage exhibited by correctional officers deserves the utmost respect, and whereas the important work of correctional officers does not receive the recognition it deserves, and it is appropriate that we honor the many contributions and accomplishments of these men and women who are a vital component in the field of corrections. Now therefore, the Wycomico County Council hereby proclaims the week of May 4th through May 10th, 2025, as National Correctional Officers Week, and call upon all citizens to observe this week in recognition of all correctional officers done this sixth day of May, 2025, signed by all members of the Wycomico County Council. Thank you. Thank you all for speaking.
Mr. President, council members, members of the audience, thank you so much for this recognition. Nobody truly understands what a correctional officer goes through every day, and these individuals work harder than anybody I know, so thank you for the recognition.
Okay. Everybody?
Do you want us to step up front some more? Give me a behind.
Yeah, come on up. Jeff, come on up here. There you go.
Thank you all.
I'd like to also recognize, we have Delegate Barry Beecham in the room tonight, and his wife Susan Beecham, who is with the Board of Education, John Palmer, who is the Wycomico County Board of Education. Am I missing anyone? Jeanne Malone, there you are, Jeanne Hynan, President of the Board of Education, glad to have you here. The next proclamation we have, we have two proclamations to recognize MCOs, proclamation to recognize MCO Joshua Foster as the 2024 Correctional Officer of the Year. There you go.
Like he said, we have a proclamation for Joshua Foster. Well, he's the Officer of the Year. Okay, whereas Officer Joshua Foster began his career with the Wycomico County Department of Corrections as a correctional officer on December 11th, 2014, after graduating from the Eastern Shore Criminal Justice Academy, and quickly learned all aspects of being a correctional officer. He was promoted to the rank of Master Correctional Officer on December 11th, 2019. On October 1st, 20, uh, on, on October 1st, 2020, he moved to the Training Department as the Assistant Training Coordinator, and on October 1st, 2022, he assumed the role of the Standards and Audit Coordinator, and whereas Officer Foster has been assigned to every operational post in the facility, performing duties in a highly professional manner with an obvious commitment to excellence in all endeavors. On more than one occasion, he has been recognized for his performance and in how he serves the county. His thoroughness has resulted in the detection and confiscation of dangerous contraband and, whereas Officer Moore remains humble and committed to his duty as a correctional officer, exemplifying the importance of dedication and hard work. His seamless ability to interrogate, integrate his professional and personal lives is a testament to his passion and determination. Now therefore, and Wycomico County Council hereby congratulates Master Correctional Officer Joshua Foster for being selected as the 2024 Wycomico County Correctional Officer of the Year, and thanks Officer Foster for his service to the community. Thank you.
Good afternoon, council, audience. Thank you for this time. I appreciate all of you have done for me. First off, I got to thank God for putting me here today, because without him, I wouldn't be here. And then my family, especially my wife Caitlin, who can't be here tonight, all her support, because the hours we worked, it was not easy, I can tell you. But without my family, my friends, my work family, thank you for coming tonight, supporting me. I appreciate it, it's an honor, and I'm not the only one who deserves this, there are several other officers who deserve recognition as well, and I thank you.
We also have a second recognition for MCO, I want to say Delby Thibault. I want to make sure I get that right, let me know, up here. Also, 2024 Correctional Officer of the Year.
All right, thank you all for being here. We have, the next one is, whereas Officer Thibault began his career with Wycomico County Department of Corrections as a correctional officer on September 17th, 2017, after graduation from Eastern Shore Criminal Justice Academy, he earned, he learned all aspects of correctional, or of correctional officer, and progressed through the ranks and promoted to a Correctional Officer II on May 23rd, 2019, and is at this present rank of Master Correctional Officer in November 2021. In his capacity, he has trained new officers, worked on post assignments throughout the facility, including central booking, and became weapon certified. Whereas Officer Thibault, Thibault is, is assigned to the transportation unit and escorts inmates outside the facility, he never hesitates to volunteer when staffing, is needed in emergency, and always goes above and beyond what is expected. A native of Haiti, he serves as interpreter in Haitian population, he represents the department respectfully and performs his duties in the highest, highly professional manner, and the obvious commitment to excellence. Whereas Officer Thibault serves as an example of professionalism, optimism, and diligence to duty, and most deserving unit selection of the, as a 2024 Correctional Officer of the Year. Now therefore, the Wycomico County Council hereby congratulates Master Correctional Officer Delby Thibault for, for being selected as 2024 Wycomico County Officer, Correctional Officer of the Year, and thank you, Officer Thibault, for all of your immense service done this day, on the, the sixth day of May, 2025. So, thank you very much. Your say's be right.
I'd like to thank all, all my coworkers. Thank you. I'd like to thank everybody, thank you so much.
We now have a proclamation to recognize National Public Health Week. We have Mr. Matthew McConaughey, our local health officer, President, I believe. Thank you all for coming.
Yeah.
This is going to be yours, right, Jeff?
Uh-huh.
Sure.
There you are.
Look at Beecham, I thought you had brought your entourage here, I figured that was probably for you.
I feel exposed.
Security.
The room looks almost empty, what happened? I still feel safe, in case anybody's worried. I'm proud to do this one. We are extremely fortunate to have an amazing health department that does things for our community way too numerous to mention, and it's led by this guy right here, Matthew McConaughey, who we captured from a state that will become apparent once he starts talking, so. This is a proclamation for National Public Health Week. It's slightly delayed because there's that scheduling conflict that we always have to deal with. So whereas the week of April 7th, 2025 is National Public Health Week, since 1995, the American Public Health Association has educated the public, policymakers, and public health professionals about issues important to improving the public's health, and whereas public health professionals help communities prevent, prepare for, withstand, and recover from the impact of a full range of health threats, including disease outbreaks, and whereas public health action, together with scientific and technological advances, has played a major role in reducing the spread of infectious disease, and whereas 60% of Americans live within preventable chronic disease and preventable health risks such as smoking and obesity are the primary reasons for deaths in the United States. Now therefore, the Wycomico County Council hereby proclaims the week of April 7th, 2025, as National Public Health Week in Wycomico County, and we call upon the citizens of Wycomico County to better understand the value of public health done this eighth day of April, 2025, signed by all members of the Wycomico County Council.
I just want to say thank you, council members and community. Public health is not just for the health department. It's a collaborative effort of everybody in the community to better the health of everyone, so it takes each individual working together to push that mission forward. So truly, any way that you can get involved in health in the community, we would gladly accept anything or any ideas, and I thank you all for your commendable efforts in the health of the community, and I look forward to serving you all into the future. Thank you.
Next proclamation we have is to recognize Reese Howard for winning the 2A State Championship in pole vaulting. This is an interesting, this is, that's an interesting person, I'll tell you.
I'm the athletic director of Parkside High School. Reese Howard is actually supporting his teammates at the first day of Baysides, and he'll be competing on Thursday. Just want to thank you for this honor from him, and hopefully he'll secure his fourth state championship in the next coming weeks, and he just wanted me to relay, he is going to Emory Riddle, and he'll compete there as well.
Could you let us know who you are for the public?
Oh, sorry, Kimberly Polot, Athletic Director.
Great. If you'll come over next to Shaney, she's going to read the proclamation for Reese. Thanks for being here.
Yeah, of course.
The County Council Wycomico County, Maryland, is with great pleasure that the members of the Wycomico County Council extends a certificate of recognition to Reese Howard of Parkside High School for winning the 2A State Championship in Pole Vault. We congratulate you on your accomplishments done this sixth day of May, 2025, and all of the county council members signed it.
Sorry, I did it out of order, but thank you so much. Come on this side. Is that okay?
Mm-hmm, that's fine.
The next proclamation we have is to recognize Wycomico High School Unified Strength and Conditioning Team for winning the gold medal in the United States Tournament. This will be presented by Councilman James Nguyen.
Is it unified?
Unified.
Brought the war paint today. No, you're good. Okay, so we have a certificate of recognition to the Wycomico High School Unified Strength and Conditioning Team for winning the gold medal in the Unified State Tournament. Congratulations, guys.
Does anybody want to say anything?
Just thank you for the recognition. A lot of our athletes from the team are competing in the track Bayside Tournament for the next few days, and then some of them had work obligations, so that's why we don't have the whole team here tonight, but thank you for the recognition, we appreciate it.
Next proclamation we have is to recognize Mabel Woodgeard for winning the Bayside Championship for Wrestling, this will be presented by Councilman Josh Hastings. Competing?
I'll read it in record. And it's Woodgeard, man? Woodgeard, that's how you say it. Yes.
Well, we want to recognize a certificate of recognition to Mabel Woodgeard for Parkside High School for winning the Bayside Championship in Wrestling. Obviously, you know that's no, no easy feat, so we appreciate that, congratulations. Done the sixth day of May, 2025, by signing the entire council. Anything you'd like to say on top of her?
No, she just says thank you, she had to work, so she wasn't able to get off, but she said thank you for the honor.
We really appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Is Don Trey here?
No, Don Trey's not here either, he's able to work, yes.
Don Trey's next.
Okay, so I'll just stay up here.
Yeah.
Want to just do one picture for those?
Yeah.
Okay.
Jeff, you can read it. Ready?
Okay.
Yeah. The next proclamation is to recognize Don Trey Fuller for winning the Bayside Championship for Wrestling as well.
Lots of work.
Parkside's doing good work. So this is a certificate of recognition to Don Trey Fuller of Parkside High School for winning the Bayside Championship in Wrestling. We congratulate you on your accomplishments done this sixth day of May, 2025, signed by all members of the Wycomico County Council.
We also said thank you this morning, because they're not able to get off work.
The final one is Lexi Guy.
It's Maradella, wrong school.
Sorry.
I'm happy you take it if you need to.
Sorry, Lexi.
Wrong school for me, for this jacket.
So the final proclamation is to recognize Lexi Guy for winning the Bayside Championship for Indoor Track and Field. Hello, Lexi? Where's Lexi? Shaney Shields is going to read this.
With great pleasure that the members of the Wycomico County Council extends a certificate of recognition to Lexi Guy of Maradella High School for winning the Bayside Championship in the high jump. We congratulate you on your accomplishment done this sixth day of May, 2025, signed by all the council members.
Lexi, how high was it?
Uh, I don't know.
Wow, okay.
And if I can just say something really quickly, I'm Lexi's principal, Liza Hastings, and beyond how amazing she is in the high jump, she's an incredible athlete, she's on the softball team as well as soccer, but beyond that, she's an amazing individual. Character, integrity, great grades, she's an all-around awesome person, so I'm glad she was able to be recognized tonight.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Benson.
Good evening, council. We're here tonight for a public hearing on Legislative Bill 2025-05, is an act to amend Chapter 117 of the Wycomico County Code titled Building Construction to Reflect the Current Additions of the International Residential Code, International Building Code, International Energy Conservation Code, and to amend the process of promulgation of future additions. The purpose of this, in 2015, the county adopted the 2015 International Codes. This is to adopt the 2021 International Code, to update the 2021 International Code, and it also contains provisions that as the codes are updated in the future, there will be an automatic change, you won't have to come back every time for the council to do it. So it's here tonight for a public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Benson. This time, we open the floor for a public hearing on Legislative Bill 2025-05. If you have any comments that you'd like to make in regard to this specific bill coming to the podium, please state your name, your county of residence, and your concerns. It concludes the public hearing for Legislative Bill 2025-05. Entertained a motion from council to approve Legislative Bill 2025-05. To move? Motion second?
Second.
Motion second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
If it's unanimous, are we okay? Roll call, starting with Joe.
Aye.
Josh.
Aye.
Jeff.
Aye.
Shaney, Jeff.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Legislative Bill number 2025-05 passes unanimously. Thank you. Mr. Benson.
The second item is the introduction of Legislative Bill number 2025-06. It's the Annual Budget and Appropriations Bill of Wycomico County, Maryland, to adopt a county budget consisting of the operating capital budget for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2026, the government on enterprise fund budget for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2026, the anticipated grant funding budget for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2026, the FY26 Position Changes Budget for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2026, the FY26 Salary Tables, the FY26 Proposed Capital Budget for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2026, and to appropriate funds for all expenditures for this fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2025, and ending June 30th, 2026, as hereafter indicated.
Thank you, Bob. Entertained a motion from council to introduce Legislative Bill 2025-06. To move? Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, introduction of Legislative Bill 2025-06 passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Benson. Good evening, Mrs. Hurley.
Good evening, Mr. President, council members, ladies and gentlemen. The next item on the agenda this evening is a public hearing on the proposed fiscal year 2026 budget. A public hearing notice was posted on the county's website and published in the local newspaper saying that a public hearing would be held this evening at 6:00 PM. The proposed fiscal year budget is posted on the county's website, and a summary is displayed on the screen behind me. I have copies of the presentation on the table as you walk in showing the departmental requests for fiscal year 2026. The county executive has submitted to the county council, as required by the charter, a balanced budget. She proposes a budget funded by many revenue sources, the principle of which is the local property taxes, followed by local income taxes. In looking at the expenditures for the operating budget, I will review one page at a time, as shown in the handout. After I am finished reading each title on the page, if anyone has anything they would like to say in regard to any of the funds on that page, please go to the microphone and state your name, county of residence, and comments. Historically, the majority of the public input has been with regards to the Board of Education's budget, so that will be read last. We do ask that you keep your comments to three minutes or less, allow time for everyone to speak, and also, please try not to repeat what other speakers have already stated. Starting with the county council, it's $1,105,209. Circuit Court, $2,454,874. Orphans Court, $116,407. State's Attorney, $5,872,112. Executive slash Administration, $805,214. Community Promotions, $45,000. If anyone has any comments regarding any of those funds, please go to the microphone and state your name, county of residence, and provide your comments. Seeing none, we'll move to the next page. Public Accountant, $215,000. Human Resources, $979,832. Are there any public comments on that page? Next is Planning and Zoning, $3,134,052. General Services, $1,676,125. Liquor slash Licenses Board, $305,970. Salisbury Fire slash Ambulance, $2,205,000. Any comments on that page? Okay, next is Volunteer Ambulance, that's $6,028,000. Volunteer Fire, $3,302,635. Emergency Services, $4,891,378. Protection of Animals, $601,328. Protection of Animals, $601,328. Public Works, $1,060,118. Moving on, Mosquito Control, $248,114. Gypsy Moth Control, $35,000. Community College, $7,362,832. Public Library, $2,099,486. Tri-County Council slash Shore Transit, that's $818,475. Public Health, $5,252,181. G O B Security, $113,772. Moving on, Community Access Channel, $251,000. Office of Economic Development, $251,940. Police Accountability Board, $13,750. Pensions and Retirement, $67,000. Hospital Disability and Death Benefit, $291,990. Workers' Comp/Liberty Insurance, $2,000. County Debt Retirement, $6,47,000. Social Services, $4,931. Transfer to Other Funds and Contingency, that's $21,288,745. Fleet Vehicles slash Lease, that's $940,000. Any public comments? Moving on, we have Roads at $12,783,355. Recreation and Parks, $4,081,811. Grants and Mandates, $861,210. Teen Adult Center slash Dub Point, $61,362. Maintenance of Aged and Community, $300,000. Commission on Aging, $750. Life Crisis Center, $15,000. Any public comments? Solid Waste, $15,148,000. Electrical Board, $48,000. Local Management Board, $1,870,617. Recreation and Parks, $6,559,219. Wycomico Youth and Civic Center, $7,2,496. Nursing Home, $11,832,110. And then the final one is the Board of Education at $66,287,791.
Good evening, county council members. I'm Micah Stoffler, Superintendent of Wycomico County Public Schools. Thank you so much for this opportunity. I would like to sincerely thank the county council for your commitment to funding our schools above maintenance of effort over the last two years. Your efforts have not gone unnoticed, and we deeply appreciate it. Supporting this request before you for additional local funding for this next year would begin to reduce overcrowded classrooms to ensure students get the attention they need with the addition of six additional classroom teachers for our elementary schools. It would enhance school safety and create a better learning environment, particularly by adding three teaching positions and three teaching assistant positions to create an elementary behavior support program, which currently does not exist in our county for those grade levels. There would also be the addition of two special education teachers to reduce class sizes in our special education programs with our students with disabilities, and we are looking to also expand extracurricular and after-school programs, as well as our sports programs, especially in our elementary schools, and continue to enhance that in our middle schools, which we've recently started as well. Also, to increase student access to music and fine arts with two additional teaching positions in elementary, which would be able to provide more sections of art and music as those teachers are traveling around to different schools in the county. Also, there will be several positions for teachers of English as a second language, and I know that all of you know that that's very much needed here in our county. And lastly, just really to keep up with a rising cost due to inflation, so that we can continue to meet the school system needs with utility costs, fuel costs, and with rising health insurance costs without current instructional positions needing to be cut in one way or another. So I always appreciate the council, because you do ask great questions, you do spend time learning and listening to the needs of our school system, you give us that time, we appreciate those opportunities. So thank you again for your time tonight, and we look forward to continuing to work together with you. Thank you all so much.
Mr. Stoffler.
Good evening. I'm Gene Malone, Chairman of the Board of Education of Wycomico County. Would like to begin by expressing my appreciation for the positive steps our county leadership has taken over the past two years in providing over the state mandated Maintenance of Effort, or MOE, level of funding to our schools. These funds have had a real impact in our schools and have supported our students in several ways, including initiating a middle school intramural sports program, which has engaged hundreds of students in grades six, seven, and eight in various sports, instituting additional tiers of support for behavior, which has improved the learning environment in our schools, and ensured that students receive the services they need to be successful, hiring additional multilingual teachers to support this fast-growing group of students. We've also been able to bring more school resource officers into our schools to provide a safe and secure environment for our students and staff. But I'm here tonight to advocate for a continued partnership with county leaders on a plan to ensure that Wycomico County Public Schools is positioned to meet the needs of a growing population. Our request to the county includes 3% above MOE to address the inflation we've seen over the past few years. Additionally, request another 2% as an investment in our schools to provide the opportunities that Dr. Stoffler listed in his remarks. We are fortunate to live in a great county that has a great school system. I look forward to working together so we may continue providing the best opportunities for a successful future. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Good evening. I'm Brian Rager, Assistant Superintendent, Chief Finance and Operations Officer for Wycomico County Schools. While Dr. Stoffler and Mr. Malone have addressed the operating budget for the school system in their remarks, I wanted to take a moment to speak to the capital budget. For those in the public who may not know, while the operating budget covers day-to-day expenses such as salaries and instructional supplies, the capital budget addresses more long-term needs within our portfolio of 24 schools encompassing over 2 million square feet. Capital projects can include large systemic projects such as HVAC and roof replacements, as well as construction of new schools and major renovations, such as the Maradella Project, which will be wrapping up in the coming months. The next capital project is the replacement Fruitland Primary School. While the state will provide the lion's share of the cost of this new school, our county is generously contributing over $30 million to this project. Due to the state's timeline in providing its share of the funding, we've been having ongoing discussions with local government on the need for the county to forward fund some of the state's share in order to meet cash flow requirements of the project. While we initially expected that forward funding would be needed in FY26, we were very pleased to report last month that this will not be the case. This is due in large part to the tenacious work of our planning and construction department and their advocacy on the part of Wycomico County at the state level. We look forward to joining with many of you as we break ground on Fruitland Primary and cut the ribbon on the renovated Maradella Middle and High School later this year, and we appreciate the continued cooperation of county government as we seek to provide the best learning environment for the students of Wycomico County. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rager.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak at tonight's county council meeting. My name is Debbie Reynolds, and as the Teacher of the Year, I'm proud to represent over 1,400 teachers in Wycomico County Public Schools, as well as our 14,000 students that we have every day. It's an honor to be representing this wonderful county. Teachers are appreciative of the fact that our county has provided over maintenance of effort funding for each of the past two years, as we see the impact of these dollars every day. Thank you for your part in providing this support. The Board of Education budget that was adopted and included in full in the county executive budget represents the hard work of a Blue Ribbon Panel on Education, which was established by the Greater Salisbury Committee as a part of their GSC 2030 vision. We're very excited that local community and business leaders have joined us this year to help advocate for additional funding, but more than the dollars, we're excited about the impact that this will have on our daily work, and I would like to share a few examples. Staff and students will feel safer with new security initiatives, including AI weapons detection. Our students will benefit from smaller class sizes. In my time at Wycomico Middle, I've had classes as small as 12 and as large as 34 students, and I can tell you that class size makes a difference for teachers and for students. We've had some great success with our middle school intramural program, and I've seen my students come to school motivated to get their grades up and keep them up so they can participate. And I'm pleased to hear that additional funding will be used to initiate similar engaging after-school opportunities for our elementary students. But what about high school students? I know that many of my students would prefer to enter the world of work rather than attending college directly after graduation. Our award-winning career and technology program provides many of these students with the training and skills needed to enter the workforce and obtain well-paying in-demand jobs. Additional funds this year will allow us to expand opportunities at CTE, allowing more students to benefit from its many programs. I, as well as the rest of the Blue Ribbon Panel, are very pleased to see that the county executive has included the full WCPS request in her budget proposal, and are very hopeful that the county council will give this careful consideration and help Wycomico County Public Schools continue to be a great place for teachers to teach and students to learn. Thank you for considering the Blue Ribbon Panel's initiative, which will make a difference to thousands of students and staff. Because of you, we can do better, Wycomico. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Reynolds, and congratulations to...
Good evening, Mr. President. I apologize for my voice, it's allergy season. I do want to start, I'm Mike Dunn, President and CEO of the Greater Salisbury Committee. I think the first thing that I want to do, with your permission, I had the privilege and honor of going into Debbie Reynolds' class at WyMiddle about a month and a half ago, and she's really deserving of being the Teacher of the Year. She had about 28 or so students, I think, in that class, and she really is good at what she does. Debbie, congratulations, and thanks for all that you do, truly. Debbie's part of our Blue Ribbon Panel, as she mentioned. Our partners in that, it's GSC. It was the Salisbury Area Chamber of Commerce, their education network, and it was the Wycomico County Education Foundation, whose Chair, Michelle Wright, is here. Clearly, we're in support of this. The GSC 2030 initiative, first thing in it, it said "sustainable funding in education", and I'm going to quote one of our Blue Ribbon members, Don Hackett from Dub Point, everybody knows Don, and he brought up a word at one of our meetings, and that word was partnership. And thanks to Dr. Rager, and Dr. Stoffler, and people like Debbie, and Michelle, and people like you, and thanks to the county executive, Julie Giordano, for putting the entire WC, County Board of Ed, budget for full funding. It's now your turn. This partnership, it's about the community understanding that education is the thing that keeps people here. We've got 15, almost 15,000 students in our Wycomico County Public Schools. All of us probably wish there weren't that many, but here we are, and you, the seven members of the county council, you've done a great job supporting education, again, as has been mentioned. Thank you for going above maintenance of effort these last couple of years. Thanks for Fruitland that's coming, and Maradella that's about to come, and Beaver Run that just happened. These are tough budget decisions, but education is what drives this economy. It's what keeps people here. So, on behalf of all of us that have been part of this and working on this for the past four months or so, we urge that you fully support education as has been put in the budget. We thank you for your work, and we look forward to continuing this partnership. Thank you all very much.
Good evening, council. My name is Monica Brooks, and I am President of Wycomico County NAACP. I'm also a resident of Wycomico County, and actually wrote something out this time. Members of the council, thank you for the opportunity to speak, and I stand here as a concerned citizen who believes in the power and transformative power of education. Our schools are the foundation of our community, and they are more than just places of learning. They are where our children develop the skills, value, and resilience that will shape their futures. However, our schools are facing significant challenges. Despite an overall increase in the county's budget, the Board of Education's funding has not kept pace. From 2010 to 2025, our county's total budget increased by 65.2%, but the Board of Education's budget rose only by 1.7%. If this trend continues, Wycomico County will fail and fall to the lowest per-student spending in the state. And contrary to what was mentioned before, we can't just include spending money on the building, that doesn't count. That does not sow into specific kids as far as the spending. The underfunding has real consequences, and our schools are struggling to attract and retain qualified teachers, particularly special education and behavioral health services, and the lack of adequate resources has led to increased mental health crisis among students, with many requiring emergency evaluations, which I'm sure many of you have heard about that. We have aging roofs, as you know, was also missing, but investing in our schools is investing in our future. Studies consistently show that every dollar spent on education yields significant returns in the form of a more educated workforce. I'm feeling the allergies myself, my eyes are burning. Reduced crime, and a stronger local economy. By increasing our school board's budget, we can ensure that our students receive the quality education they deserve, which in turn will benefit all of Wycomico County. So as always, I urge you to prioritize education in the upcoming budget decisions. Our children are not just the leaders of tomorrow, but they're the leaders of today. And to just add a piece, I do, I am grateful, I am happy to see the change in the funding over the last couple of years, but I know that we can do better. I know we can prioritize this so that we can slowly but surely catch up to where we would like our county to be, but I thank you all for your time, and have a good night.
Are there any other public comments? Mr. President, I believe that concludes the public hearing.
Thank you, Ms. Hurley.
Okay. Next on the agenda are three more public hearings. Each of the public hearing notices were posted on the county's website and published in the local newspaper. The next public hearing is on Resolution Number 52-2025. This is to amend the 2025-05-2025, this is to amend the 2025-2025, this is to amend This is to amend the 2009 Wycomico County Comprehensive Water and Sewer Plan for Reagan's Run subdivision, Riverside Drive Extended. This is a request to amend Sewer Map S4, three to five years, to show parcel 65 on Tax Map 47, located on Riverside Drive, Salisbury, Maryland, being designated as Sewer Map S6, No Plan Service, to allow for the construction of a 10-mot subdivision with individual well and septic systems. Council did hold a work session on this request on April the 15th, and we have Mr. Brian Wilkins here with the Department of Public Works if you have any questions.
At this time, we open the floor for a public hearing on Resolution 52-2025. If you have any comments you'd like to make in reference to this specific resolution, come to the podium, please. State your name, your county residence, and your concern. Concludes the public hearing on Resolution 52-2025. Entertained a motion from council to approve Resolution 52-2025.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes. I just want to make a statement on, obviously, that I'm happy to see that we're moving forward with more houses. It'd be really great. You know, we need to have more housing built in this county, preferably on, you know, on public sewer and public water, but I obviously won't make a stink about this one, but, you know, obviously, we, you know, typical minor subdivision should be seven houses, not 10, and, you know, I think all data continues to show that it's, you know, even just a one-septic system is about 60% less efficient at nutrient reduction. So if we're going to continue to make progress on a cleaner Chesapeake Bay, cleaner Wycomico County, this is one of those areas where we can do that. We need to be hooking up more septic systems, not allowing more of them in the county. It's only a matter of time before, you know, the county's going to have to put more money into things like these to try to fix them. We already have, I think, what was it, 20,000 or so in the county, 18,000, of which a good now, a good amount of them, I don't want to put a number to it, are already failing or in the process of failing. So that being said, I'm happy to see more development, but would prefer it be on public water and sewer, and I'll just leave it at that.
If you're okay with it.
Yeah, I'll go for it.
That's a big step. Thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none. All those in favor of Resolution 52-2025, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Resolution passes unanimously.
And next is a public hearing on Resolution Number 53-2025. This is to approve a tower lease agreement with Selco Partnership doing business as Verizon Wireless. This lease agreement is for a tower structure and parcel of land located at 21083 Cedar Hill Parkway in Byval, Maryland. It's known as Tax Map 53, parcel 1113. The purpose of the lease agreement is to extend the tower structure 20 feet and to provide land space to install, maintain, upgrade, replace, and operate communication equipment. The proposed tower lease agreement is for a term of five years, commencing May 2025, with four renewal terms of five years each. The annual base rent for the initial term is $24,400 per year, adjusted thereafter each year by 2%. And we have Mr. Lorenzo Cropper here, Director of Emergency Services, if you have any questions.
At this time, we open the floor for a public hearing on Resolution 53-2025. If you have any comments that you'd like to make in regard to this specific legislation, come to the podium, state your name, your county residence, and your concerns. That concludes the public hearing on Resolution 53-2025. Entertained a motion from council to approve Resolution 53-2025.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion's second. Discussion, Mr. Cropper, good to see you.
Good evening.
I only have one question. I couldn't tell from reading it. I'm assuming this, of course, will be for commercial, but is it also something where the public will have better reception in that area through Verizon?
That's correct. If you're familiar with the area, you know that when you get by Poplar Hill, you kind of lose service at present. This will give you service in that area all the way down to the border. Yes, in that area.
When are they going to start? Tomorrow?
Hopefully soon.
You have Mr. Cropper here. They're probably doing it tonight.
They might be. They'll be done tomorrow. Yeah.
Any other questions, comments? All those in favor of Resolution 53-2025, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Resolution passes unanimously. Thanks, sir.
Next is a public hearing on Resolution Number 54-2025. This is approving a priority letter for the Maryland Department of Transportation's fiscal year 2026 through 2031 Consolidated Transportation Program. Each year, counties send priority letters to the Maryland Department of Transportation that highlight local priorities for system preservation, expansion projects, safety improvements, and planning initiatives. The projects proposed by the county executive have been submitted for review and are available for public comment.
At this time, we open the floor for a public hearing on Resolution 54-2025. If you have any comments you'd like to make, come to the podium, please. State your name, your county residence, and your concerns. This is referenced the priority letter for the Maryland Department of Transportation. Seeing none, that concludes the public hearing on Resolution Number 54-2025. Entertained a motion from council to approve Resolution 54-2025. So moved. Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of Resolution 54-2025, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Resolution passes unanimously.
And next, for your consideration, is Resolution Number 55-2025. This is authorizing Clark Mosquito Control Products, Inc. as a sole source vendor for the Clark Cougar ULV sprayer to be utilized by the Wycomico County Mosquito Control. We do have Ms. Amy Carnodle here, purchasing agent. I do want to point out the S N behind the resolution number means supermajority, so in order for this resolution to pass, you need a supermajority vote, meaning that five council members must vote in favor of the resolution.
Thank you, Ms. Hurley. Entertained a motion from council to approve Resolution 55-2025.
So moved.
Second? Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of Resolution 55-2025, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Resolution passes unanimously.
The next item for business is Resolution Number 56-2025. This is amending Article 2, Title County Council, Section 201, Title Composition in Districts, to create seven single-member council manic districts. To give a summary of the background, a court case was filed in the United States District Court for the District of Maryland to create seven single-member council manic districts for county council elections. The parties in the case participated in formal mediation before a U.S. magistrate judge and reached a settlement, which eliminated the five-to-two election structure for the county council. A U.S. District Court judge entered a final consent judgment and decree, which orders the county council to follow the election plan, which establishes the seven single-member council manic districts, and further requires that all council candidates must reside in the district in which they seek election. The county council must now amend Section 201 to comply with the final consent judgment and decree.
Entertained a motion from council to approve Resolution 56-2025. Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Josh?
Just, I guess the only question on this is, we do spell out in this the council manic districts. Do we, I guess, do we need to be more clear? Is there anything we need to do to be more clear regarding the Board of Education as a part of this, or is that just assumed since these are the districts? There are strong feelings that I just figured I'd bring it up since I didn't see it spelled out in there.
It's my understanding that the Board of Education's districts was changed by state legislation, but Mr. Benson can add to that if he wants.
That's what, I mean, the state legislature in the last session changed the Board of Education, so that's a separate component that goes together with this.
All those in favor of Resolution 56-2025, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Motion's carried. Resolution 56-2025 passes unanimously.
Okay. Next is the submission of an appointment to the School Building Commission and Lower Shore Workforce Alliance by Mr. Monkey Loveman, Director of Administration.
Good evening, Mr. Loveman. How are you?
Good afternoon, Council President.
Two submissions, correct?
Doing great. Yep, I have a couple of submissions. One is for Mr. Matt Drew, I think we all know, to the School Building Commission, which myself and the Council President sit on, and their board assists in planning, building, construction, rehabilitation, maintenance projects. And, you know, we really go through a lot of detail in those meetings in new construction and things like that, and it's a very rewarding position. So I want to formally submit Matt Drew's name. I believe the Chair, Amanda Pollak, is the one who submitted him with, you know, everyone agrees that he'd be a great pick. Did you want me to also do the other submission, or wait?
You can do the other submission.
Okay. And then the other submission we have is for the, let me get it right, because it's like for the Lower Workforce, the Lower Shore Workforce Alliance, and that's Mrs. Wainwright, and they provide policy and oversight for Workforce Innovation Opportunity Act funds, which are awarded to lower shore of Maryland, local workforce development area. So they really, you know, help with our economy through the, you know, tri-county council. So I want to formally submit Mrs. Wainwright as well.
Before you, is Resolution Number 57-2025. This is confirming the appointment of G. Matthew Drew as a member of the School Building Commission.
Entertained a motion from council to approve Resolution 57-2025.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Resolution passes.
Next is Resolution Number 58-2025, confirming the appointment of Georgia L. Wainwright as a member of the Lower Shore Workforce Alliance.
Entertained a motion from council to approve Resolution 58-2025. So moved. Second?
Second.
Any discussions?
I have, want to know if Mrs. Wainwright or Ms. Wainwright is here in attendance.
So, we offer that, but some come and some don't.
What did you say?
No, I do not believe she is here. We offer that when people are going to be appointed, we say, you know, it's up to them.
Because I don't know who she was, you know. I know Matt, but no, Ms. Wainwright.
Seeing none. All those in favor of Resolution 58-2025, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Resolution passes.
And next is a submission of William Holmes as the Assistant Director of Administration.
So tonight, I'm formally submitting Mr. Holmes as Assistant Director of Administration, where we obviously have a vacancy. As I know you have his resume and some background information, you'll be meeting him a little later tonight, but 10-year service to our military, veteran leadership skills, just right down the line with, especially the leadership aspect that he provided our U.S. military. We were really impressed. We interviewed several people, and, you know, he was the top candidate, so I'm proud to submit his name.
Mr. Loveman?
That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. Drew, congratulations. I see you over there in the back there.
Thank you for your nomination.
Thanks. You'll be a great addition. You'll be a great addition. Chatel, how are you?
Doing well, thank you. Good evening, President Cannon. How are you?
Doing well, thanks.
All right. My name is Angelie Chatel, the internal auditor, and I would like to present for Resolution 49-2025.
Entertained a motion from council to approve Resolution 49-2025. So moved. Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Thank you.
The Office of the Internal Auditor performed an audit of an event held in Wycomico County called Safari at the Quarry. The focus of this exercise was to determine the adequacy of controls in place for the Safari at the Quarry and related events on county property and to determine adherence to those controls. The objectives were to evaluate the controls designed to manage risks related to reporting accurate, reliable information, compliance with policies, procedures, laws, and regulations, safeguarding assets, and then to make recommendations if appropriate. I concluded that the program design was inconclusive at this early stage of developing events at the Connolly Mill property. I had six findings and other noteworthy observations with related recommendations regarding fostering transparency before signing special event contracts, written rental or permit procedures and controls for the Connolly Mill property, future Connolly Mill property contract duties and other details. County completed pre-event safety inspection. County completed post-event safety inspection, and a method to track the completion of contract duties. Management did provide a response, and then I prepared a memo to address the response statements regarding the internal audit bias, and then I believe there's another attachment from a community. And then I'd just like to also give a special thanks to the departments for their help with this project, and then I will post this in the usual manner if this is approved. And I'm glad to answer any questions you may have.
Questions from council?
I've got a couple. On page four, sixth paragraph, there's a statement, I know you just said that you thanked staff for cooperating, but says here, "The I did not receive support documents to verify, audit the figures. Department of Recreation, Parks, and Tourism stated they would prefer the spreadsheet stay internal." Why was that? What was the problem with that being revealed or furnished to you? And I guess the other part of that, my statement is, you said they cooperated, but it sounds here like they didn't, so.
So the main department that was working with was Public Works. The Department of Recreation, Parks, and Tourism, they created this separate economic impact statement, and I think some of their figures maybe are in-house designed things. This is maybe the first time that we've done an economic impact. It's the first time I know. Of course, I've only been here for a couple of years. I think that there's just a little, I can't really speak for the department, but the department was as helpful as they, I mean, they were helpful, they just didn't necessarily provide support documents for every single number in their...
As internal auditor, I mean, can't you request that information be provided to you?
At the end of the day, this is the, these aren't actual costs to the county, they weren't costs of anybody. This is just the estimate of the economic impact in the area. Like, some of the items, for instance, were like estimates of hotel purchases or hotel room rentals, estimated food that was being purchased in the county, that sort of thing. It wasn't something that was going to, or it didn't seem like something that was going to be impacting the county fund.
I understand that, but when somebody's trying to sell a project, say the Civic Center or Wreckin' Parks or anywhere, they always use those numbers to promote the event, you know, whatever they're going to do, you know, how much good it's going to do the county. The other one, the next one I really paid attention to now, over the years, you know, my lifetime, I've run heavy equipment, some I've owned a big excavator at one time, small loaders, owned a dump truck at one time, hired people to do work, and I'm questioning this moving of soil for obstacles. That's on page four, I think, or what page is that? Let me look. Sorry about that. Five hours. I mean, were you in agreement that that was correct?
I can't actually speak to that one because I was not provided the support documents for that one.
You weren't supplied the documents for that either.
Correct. The only expense in this image that I was provided a support document for was for the security. So the street sweeper and the moving of soil for the obstacle, I didn't see like timesheets or any sort of like written ticket thing.
Do you think there were support documents?
I'm not quite sure. So part of managerial accounting, there might be like job costing things that a department will be doing. I don't... I don't know if they do job costing in the department generally, which, but I inquired for support documents and I only received them for the security.
Is there anything else that you asked for in this audit that you did not receive throughout this audit? I'll see.
There were various concerns throughout this audit, and so some of the findings and recommendations go to some of these concerns specifically around support documents. So, for instance, the last, the very last recommendation, a method to track the completion of contract duties, you know, I think that kind of goes to some of these support document items. The written rental agreement procedures and controls for the Connolly Mill property, that's the second recommendation. I think that if there was more controls in the department for these events, then the documentation maybe would be better. And then if there was more tracking of the completion of activities, then there would be that support documentation, like, you know, oh, did we do this? Yes, where's the support for that? And then they can attach it to the file. So if they have a tracking mechanism, I think then the support documents will be included if they, and you know, if they have their duties outlined and so they know this is what we're going to be doing, this is what we have to track. That's the theory.
I noticed somewhere in here, I'm looking for it, I thought I had it written down, that there was a law that active mining sites were not to be used by the public at all. I mean, that's pretty much a federal, was that a federal law? Or the Mining Commission or whatever, and this is considered a mining site, correct?
I believe so. There's, and this might be where the lawyer has to come in for the whole legal opinion or something, but I think there was some sort of distinction between a mining site and a borough pit, and that they're slightly different somehow. And so, but for whatever this was, at some point along the way of this audit, there was something about how two things can't be happening at the same time, like recreation and mining, or whatever this activity is.
Excuse, in the response I read that was, they weren't doing this on the week, they weren't mining on the weekends, they were doing a Jeep event on the weekend. So they considered it not active because it wasn't, they weren't digging dirt on a weekend, correct?
Some sort of thing like that.
Okay. I think we've got a, we were discussing that, the hours, I think somebody sent us a tape or a video, and it was also some quotes made about it being so many feet from the pit. And I think this video from what the gentleman sent us, this is a video from a drone that somebody took. It's not very long, I think, was it three minutes? Something like that. And apparently these, from what I'm told, I wasn't there, my Jeep days are over with, I got over that when I was in my twenties. But this dirt was moved to create these jumps, right? So that looks like more than five hours worth of digging going on. This is where they're, this is where they're building the jumps. And this is worth $136. They say it's cost $136, correct?
Yes, $136.95.
Saying the total was only about $1,000, Joe, I find it kind of incredulous that the county lost a minimum, I mean, we're not even claiming what the true expenses might have been, but we invested about $6,000 in this project and the owner only lost $1,800, so the county lost more than he did. So what they're doing now, they're building the actual part of the track for the.
Course, I guess you call it.
Course, track, whatever. So did you have specific timesheets represented here and the man-hours that were done, whether they were driving the truck, whether they were using the back haul or anything like that? There was no documentation?
None. None provided to me.
But that was not, that wasn't the, that wasn't live wire that was doing, that was the county that was doing that. So we have those documentations, right, I would assume?
I would assume as well, but I requested them and I did not receive them.
Pays their salaries, right?
I guess if it was that quick, it probably wouldn't cost them.
They sped the cash. I don't understand why the county would not want to relay to you what exactly investments we had in this project. I don't understand that. If one thing, you want to be efficient with all your operations and you want to let the public know exactly what the involvement was and what the costs were. I'm really very surprised that in the report, it does not tell you that we, you know, we spent this many man-hours building mounds. I mean, that's no small task.
You don't have to be a construction engineer to figure out that that's, you know.
I think you referenced a video and then, did you say a photo as well, just now?
Was there a photo? Somebody said they sent a photo. I haven't seen that.
That's the photo. That's the photo that was sent in.
Okay, that basically shows them close to the pit. Okay, all right.
Yeah, so that looks closer than what maps I was provided.
That's different than the maps you were provided that.
It looks like it to me, yes.
Looks like it is, okay.
Yes.
The county executive responded to your audit, accused you of being biased. I kind of wish you were biased, but you're not, unfortunately.
If anything, I actually support this.
I know you do. I know you do.
It was very tough. I feel like these kind of events are, you know.
I know you try very hard to be fair, but it's kind of hard to be fair when you can't get the information that you're asking for. I've experienced that over a number of years, ask for something and get delayed or just put off. I guess my question is, Mr. President, accepting this audit as it is, does that mean we approve what's been said? And if that, I guess I'm asking that question. I won't answer the question, I just asked.
For the most part, we are approving her work and what she's presented to us, and we confirm it, we sort of codify that she's done the work and she's presented it formally to the council. The council, it isn't really any means by which for the county to say we agree with what was done, unless, of course, I know there's a statement said that they felt that the internal auditor's report said that it was a very satisfactory result in this whole program. Is that correct?
That I said it was satisfactory?
Yeah, I thought I saw that in Ms. Owen's letter, unless I misread it.
My conclusion was that it was too early a stage to give it a, let me get the exact quote I used.
I think you said it was too, a satisfactory report.
It was inconclusive.
Yeah.
It was inconclusive, because it's, at this early stage of developing events at the Connolly Mill property.
I would, I would suggest the county executive wrote a response that was, well, I didn't agree with, a lot of people probably didn't, but the councils never wrote a response to this, and if we had a response written, we could enter it into the record. I would suggest we table this, and so the council administrator can write a response based on what the council members have in mind.
Does motion table, is there a second?
Second.
Motion's second. All is in favor of tabling Resolution 49-2025, say aye. Oppose?
Oppose.
Opposed, I guess.
The Chair votes aye, the Resolution 49-2025 will be tabled by a vote of four to two. Thank you, Ms. Chatel. Entertaining motion from council approved Resolution 50-2025. So moved, second?
Second.
Discussion.
All right. So the Office of the Internal Auditor performed an audit of purchase cards in Wacomiko County. The focus of this exercise was to determine the level of adequacy of internal controls in place for the process of accounting for purchases for the county through the established P-card system. The objectives were to analyze the usage of purchase cards, evaluate adherence to internal controls such as purchasing limits, sample receipts for correct object allocation in the ledger, and to make recommendations if appropriate. I concluded that the program design was at a satisfactory level, and then I had six findings and other noteworthy observations with related recommendations regarding support documentation, splits in structured transactions, quotes in bidding, the P-card manual, profile controls, that one was remediated, regular review of business need for purchase cards, and then other P-card manual considerations, which was partly remediated. Management did provide a response. The audit report contains additional information and will be posted on the county website in the usual manner if approved. And a special thanks to all departments for their help in this project, and I would be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Just for anyone. Okay. You made a comment that support documents and/or comments seem partly or fully lacking in 78 of the 518 tested transactions.
What, which number was that?
Page 10, paragraph one.
And then you said, however, some transactions were still concerning. But that didn't sound good. Upon the IA's request, departments later sent support documents for most of these transactions.
Yes.
However, some transactions were still concerning, but 78 out of 518?
Yeah, so about 15% initially were partly lacking, but then I submitted to finance and maybe some other departments, like I think I primarily dealt with finance, and then they would send things out as needed to the other department. So I would notify them of the, maybe the transaction number and what item was lacking of a support document, and then the departments would email or hand-deliver the missing support documentation to finance and then to me, or directly to me.
You also stated in here that some P-card purchases at restaurants and eating and drinking places did not state the names of those who ate the meals. And then you also put in here, this is very thorough, Section 1410A of the Personnel Manual stated that expenses incurred by an employee for a meal during local travel are not normally reimbursable. The cost of the meal is included as part of the meeting, seminar, training, or convention fee. So I thought that was a bit disconcerting that they, you don't even know who was attending as far as who was eating the meals, am I correct?
Correct. I just would like to point out, for some of these, the event seemed legitimate, but it wasn't something that was clearly in like a Personnel Manual or in the Purchase Manual. And just one example that's not like targeting employees specifically, for instance, the Circuit Court, they purchase meals for the jury members, you know, so like their names aren't on these receipts, and probably they shouldn't be. That's just one example where the names weren't. But then there are some where there's, you know, true purchases for employees, purchases for events. There was a very wide array. I just wanted to point out that sometimes the reason could be justified for not having names, whereas other times maybe it would have been something that could have fallen under this Personnel Manual guideline.
But I would think that, and I get that 100%, but I would expect that in those reports as, when you reviewed them, I would suspect there would be a statement saying names cannot be revealed because these are jurors, right? Wouldn't there be some qualifier, some, something in the documentation that would, you know, explain it?
And this goes to where, part of this recommendation is to review the controls for the Purchase Card Manual and the Personnel Manual. What you're suggesting sounds reasonable, but it might not be done currently because there isn't a written control to tell a department that they need to do this. And then there might be some departments that need to be exempted. And actually, I think, and this is something that, I think, other council members raised concerns about, specific people, but when the specific people are elected at the beginning of the Personnel Manual, there's something about how this manual is, and I don't have the manual in front of me, so I can't quote it exactly, but it somehow suggests to me that an elected person who makes purchases doesn't have to comply with that section of the Personnel Manual.
And we've been trying to be good, right? All this time? Okay. On page 11, splits in structured transactions, quotes in bidding. Did you notice any, what they call splitting of invoices to get things purchased?
Yes.
And that's wrong, right? You don't do that.
Based on what I observed, it looked like some things were potentially non-compliant with Purchase Card Manual, possibly the Charter. I quoted the Charter in a different section than right there. I think in the profile control area, I think that's where I cited the Charter section that says, "No contract nor purchase hereunder shall be broken down into parts so as to circumvent or event the dollar limitation herefore set forth." Part of the interpretation of that and the difficulty that maybe can arise is when, when is it a contract versus very similar items? And so I, I think I did things a little bit on the conservative side, but, you know, so somebody else could have said maybe there were more than 1%, somebody could have said there was, you know, not even one. You know, for instance, if there's a table and chairs and they're being purchased from the same vendor and they're the same style, but they purchased the chairs in one transaction and then the table in another, you know, like I consider that some sort of splitting activity, something like that.
Splitting is done to get around the rules.
Right, so if you buy the dinner set, you know, and then if it's over 5,000, right? And so that's why it wasn't necessarily one, sometimes there was something where it could be, you know, the table and half the tables on one card day and the other half's the next day or something, but there could be situations where it was the table and the chairs, and I would consider that splitting in my analysis.
How many credit cards is out there? P-cards?
Excellent question. So.
So we have, what, about eight or 900 employees? Something like that. I heard there was like 200 or 300 credit cards.
So full-time, and these numbers could be not accurate, you know, but full-time, approximately 580.
Police?
Yeah, approximately.
Okay.
The card count on, on the profiles that were sent to me on July 18th, 2024, the card count was 290. I noted some profile, and this was a remediated issue with the profile names, sometimes they were over the limit. So this is a slight technicality, but like, when you have to bid anything that's like over, that's $5,000, then that means that $4,999.99 is actually the limit. And so some of the limits before were, you know, 25,000 or were 5,000, and they technically should have been, you know, that 4,000. should have been, you know, that $4,999.99. So the profiles were updated during the audit, and I got a new set of profiles, and the counts on those were 373. So, the beginning of the audit was 290, at the end it was 373. For the cards.
So between the time you started the audit and you finished the audit, you say it was 373?
Yeah.
So they added 83 more credit cards between, how long did it take you to do the audit?
I asked some of these, that question as well, and I don't, I don't know if I have it written in here, so, so I may not, I may not be quoting exactly.
That's fine.
There was something about maybe the, the policy change and how they issue cards, whether it was like one card for multiple people, or each person would now have a card instead of having a shared card for like the administrator.
I see what you have in here, 36.9% were not used during the test months?
Yeah.
That they weren't even active. So, do you feel as an internal auditor, in an opinion, that there's too many cards out there floating around in Wycomico County?
I don't want to say that there's a specific magic number for cards that should be active. I think that we have to look at the business need, and then looking at, you know, I hate to say this, you know, but there's this, that Charter Section 314 where it comes into like, there's this management discretion thing, and so, you know, if somebody's making a dollar purchase once a month, and then there's somebody else that's making $10,000, like, is it, is it for me to say that the $1 purchase isn't necessary? So I think that ultimately, it's not about, you know, me making that management decision about what, what the number should be, or what the threshold of activity should be for somebody to maintain a card, but that the, the county implement a policy of reviewing that business need. I'm not sure that that's really being done. So, there's a recommendation that, that there's a specific regular review of that business need. So, you know, as you pointed out, the, the number of active cards, or the, the number of inactive cards, or, sorry, the number of active cards not being used, you know, was 36%. So I feel like if there was a regular review of that business need, maybe that number would drop down.
Almost the last thing I want to talk about, or ask, timely signed and submitted reclamation reports. I noticed that it looks like in here that they weren't keeping up with what they were supposed to turn in. On page 14.
Yeah, so the, so the timely signed...
Reconciliation reports.
Recklessly.
I can't get that word out. 22 out of 93 of them were missing.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I feel like the, the timing, a lot of, you know, a lot of departments don't submit these on time, and whether that can be, I remember talking about if that could be extended, that deadline, and part of this deadline is really about the vendor. So, so these reconciliations should be, you know, as timely as possible, and then when they're completely missing, that's, that's also very concerning.
I misspoke earlier when I said Ms. Olin had noted that you gave this audit a satisfactory level. That was actually the satisfactory level was referencing this report.
Yeah, so, so as much as the internal controls in the purchase manual have flaws, like that 77.4% of unobserved observations regarding the timely signed and submitted reconciliation report, the, the purchase card manual has not actually been approved by council. So it wasn't something that I thought, if there's violations of the purchase card manual, that that would be a, that would make it a more elevated finding, like, all of these would have been more elevated. But this is something that they've developed, and I think that they're in good faith trying to comply with it, and some of the controls in the purchase card manual, I think are, they're really good, and so even if they're not met partly, that, that the, the meaning of it more than not in different areas and the, like, overlapping levels of controls within it, that there, like, there was, I didn't find any like major, you know, I didn't see anybody buying things at a lingerie store, you know, like, I didn't see purchases for $1,000 that were just clearly for one person of, you know, like, there was like an event, or even though, even though the event didn't have the names of everybody attending, it wasn't like somebody went to an expensive restaurant that was $1,000 a person, you know? So there's overlapping controls within their manual. The manual hadn't been approved by council, and I didn't see any, what seemed like material significant expenditures that weren't reasonable.
Justified.
Yeah, justified.
Well, I'm sure people watching this on TV or in the audience are wondering why the, John and myself, and questioning this so much, not long after we both got on the council, we had the landfill debacle where there was a large theft, a theft scheme that went on for months, maybe a year or more. When we were in the budget session, we asked a question, and we were given a short answer that we didn't follow up on. If we'd have followed up on that and been more inquisitive about what was going on, we might have been able to head that off at the pass before it got more serious, but, so when we see something like this, we have to, you know, we have to be, you know...
Start, go ahead.
Yeah, no, I'm fine. We have to question it, so.
And I was just, just adding to that, usually these recommendations are for management, and, and one that I heavily encourage you all, you council members, honorable council members, to follow up on is recommendation number three, purchase card manual. And it's specifically, the recommendation is that the council, with the council attorney and county attorney, review whether a public hearing is needed for the council to approve or not approve the purchase card manual. So I highly encourage you to follow up on that one. The others...
Wasn't that we had to have a public hearing? We have a public hearing.
That you have to, or you don't?
No, we can do a public hearing.
Okay. So it was to review with the attorney about whether there needs to be a public hearing and, or whatever the process is regarding this purchase card manual. But I encourage you to seek out the, the legal advice regarding the next steps with this purchase card manual, because apparently it was created a while ago, and I have, I have somewhere in here...
Probably created when they had 30 purchase cards instead of 300, right?
I can't speak to the number that were, so, the county executive in June of 2018, yes, it says, approved by the county executive on this 20th day of June 2018.
Jane?
I'm looking at the number of cards that you have. 300, what did you say, 300?
393.
290.
290 right now.
290 at the beginning of the audit, 373 at the end of the audit.
It's 373 cards. Who pays for this? The county finance office?
The, the individual cards?
Who pays for these cards? The department in their budget?
I'm not sure if the cards themselves have a price, but then the spending on it...
The spending.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
Spending. Who, who pays that?
The, the divisions or the departments generally do.
It's part of their budget.
Yeah, how they spend.
It's part of their budget.
Yeah.
And to me, I don't have a problem with the jury, you know, something like that, but I have a problem with not knowing who is spending on those cards, and could it be just two cards in one department, like, maybe Rose Department? Break it down so you can limit the cards that you have, and then you can better track who's spending what, and who, you know, who's spending what in what department. But all these cards out here, and you don't even know who has them. How do you know that they're not spending something personal? You know, how do you know that? You might say, you might think they don't, but I guarantee you that if somebody's paying something personal.
The, the reconciliation process, or the, the reports, I call them envelopes, because there's a cover sheet that says something about envelopes. There's supposed to be the, the actual receipt within it, and, and it's supposed to be signed by multiple people, the head of the department's supposed to review this report. So, so there's a lot of controls for these packets, and there's a benefit to the county for using purchase cards, I believe, and you'd have to talk to finance. I think having finance here when you decide about this P-card manual, that there's some sort of discount or, or something that, involving using these purchase cards versus just paying with a check.
Follow-up audit next year?
Yes, yes, yes.
Any other questions?
My question, should, looking at this report, the questionable transactions, the splitting of receipts, should we be doing this every year?
Yes, and I believe that we do something every year. The prior internal auditor did as well. He maybe just didn't look at the same things I looked at.
How do you randomly pick which transactions you're going to check?
I do it on a risk basis, so I don't do it randomly. That's partly why you can't extrapolate my percentages for everything. So, for, for an example, sometimes I'll look at, like, the, the most expensive items, and then there's, you know, gift cards was a concern. I heard about gift cards, so I, you know, I checked what things looked like gift cards. I, I looked at the prior internal auditor's reports, both this one and then the auditor before that, for some of his findings and areas, to then look for those similarities as well.
All's in favor of Resolution 50, 2025, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes. Thank you, Ms. Chitell.
Thank you, counsel.
At this time, we open the floor for public comments. If you have any comments you'd like to make coming to the voting, please state your name, your county residence, and your concerns.
Mike Goldberg, Wycomico County, here to talk about Safari at the Quarry Audit. Nine pages of an audit report, 100 pages of management response, very interesting. There was no supporting documentation for the financial statement or economic impact statement. The financial and economic impact statements are therefore worthless and would not be acceptable to any financial institution, and I can state that as someone who was a commercial real estate lender for the 10th largest bank in the world for 40 years. This financial statement has no value. Garbage. Now, this piece of paper actually does have some intrinsic value, and I would trade it for this financial statement any day of the week. It should not be acceptable to taxpayers, let alone a financial institution, for an event that had a paltry 150 participants, should have only taken a few days to prepare a financial statement, but here we are, a year later. I guess it takes a lot of time to contrive a misleading response to an audit. Also, no verification of the man hours spent clearing trails and building obstacles, or depreciation of the equipment used and fuel. The five hours of time claimed in the management response, this is entirely implausible. This was easily hundreds of hours of work and heavy equipment usage. Observers reported that much of the trail clearing was performed in the last week or two preceding the event. Undoubtedly, more than 5,000 square feet of trails were cleared, which would have required an erosion and sediment control permit from Maryland Department of the Environment, which apparently was neither applied for nor received. Now, I would remind the executive that it wasn't the Watergate break-in that took down Richard Nixon, but rather, it was the cover-up. Wycomico citizens, Wycomico County citizens, were denied due process of law. The contract, which is actually a lease, was misleadingly labeled as a memorandum of understanding. It wasn't advertised in a newspaper of general circulation within the county as required under the Code of Maryland Local Government, Article Number 3312, as applicable to charter counties under the Express Powers Act. This requires that before the county makes any, and I'm going to paraphrase, any lease of county property, the county shall publish notice of the lease in a newspaper of general circulation for three successive weeks in at least one newspaper, and, and people shall be given opportunity to pose objections. The executive claimed that promoting the event on Facebook fulfilled this requirement. Horse feathers. It's patently untrue. Facebook is not a newspaper. The event was only advertised on Facebook for the benefit of the event promoter not to advise community stakeholders. February a year ago, on behalf of the Shadow Hills Homeowners Association, I prepared a nine-page certified letter to which an 11-page abstract or analysis of the lease agreement was attached. These documents very specifically warned the executive of the multitude of contractual deficiencies and accurately predicted that the event would lose money. The executive ignored the warning, and now the taxpayers are paying the price for her recklessness. It took nine months for the executive to provide any information to the internal auditor so that she could prepare the report, yet the information provided remains glaringly incomplete and contains many provably false assertions. The county charter requires that the executive must provide all information requested by the internal auditor. Clearly, she willfully and intentionally failed to do so.
Goldberg, you need to rec...
Okay, the county executive, I didn't even see the time till now.
It wasn't there.
The executive obstructed the audit. Despite the executive's egregious conduct, she continues to deflect responsibility and has attempted to blame Shadow Hills for her misconduct and recklessness. She entered into the lease unilaterally without council approval or public input, and now she owns this unilaterally. I would also point out in that video, when you saw the excavator working and the dump truck unloading, they were actually importing fill dirt into a dirt quarry to build those, to build those obstacles. Rather interesting. Hmm? That's all I got to say. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
My name is Dave Chiddington. I'm residing at Southampton Bridge Road in the Nutter's Crossing subdivision. I come here tonight to ask for your guidance, open up some dialogue, get some ideas, expertise. I'm not quite sure which member represents that area, that we could maybe just have open dialogue for that. I know how I would handle this back in my, my tenure in Voorhees, where I was the Director of Public Works and the Public Safety Manager, but I don't have that power any longer. I came down here a couple of years ago, and we love it down here. We are with the HOA now, and meeting after meeting, all the residents keep coming up with the same thing. It's speeding. I don't know whether additional signage would help to do something about it. We asked for a small, children-to-play signs. We got one 12-by-18 sign. It's just ignored. We could go down many different avenues to slow these people down. We have no sidewalks. We have dog walkers. We have joggers. We have moms and dads taking babies in a carriage down the street. We have bikes. So, they're forced to the street, and I literally can tell you, without exaggeration, I watch people speed up to a stop sign. So, I would just ask that somebody could take my information, and we can have open dialogue about this whole situation, but I'd rather be proactive before we have a disaster. And it is going to happen, I'm telling you. There's too many people on the street because they have to be in the street, and something is going to happen. So, just guide me in whichever direction you think I should, I should pursue.
What was your last name again, Dave?
Chiddington, C-H-I-D-D-E-N-T-O-N.
At the sheriff's office.
I could give you my cell.
You don't have to do that on...
No, not on that, right. I'll catch up to you.
Leave your information. You want to give your information.
Yeah. Okay. I appreciate it. This is just the first step. I told, I told our board I would, I would open dialogue with the county, but we do need to have something happen. So I... So I appreciate anything you could do to prevent a disaster. Thank you.
Thank you.
Give Mrs. Hurley your information.
Yeah.
Okay. Put the end of the table.
Thank you.
Good evening. John Palmer, Del Mar, Maryland. Not speaking as School Board Maryland member, just a taxpayer. During my 20 years at the University of Maryland, I've had a lot of experience with purchase cards and audits and what was wrong and how to fix things. It appears we have big problems with a couple of the audits that we have tonight. And I believe the person doing the audit needs some help. I would recommend that you, in order to correct something, you got to know what's wrong. From watching what went on tonight, nobody knows what's wrong. We can't get any good answers. You have to find out those answers, what is wrong first, and then correct it. A good way to do that is with what they call forensic audit. You can do that. And in the contract for the forensic audit, I would specifically state to have them write what is wrong and how to correct it. And not just to put in there that they were there to follow the orders of what's written in and how to do a specific audit. Because normally what they'll do is they won't make recommendations. They will just check to see if you follow the procedure that's stated. And I believe that's what you need to do. I think it'd be a big help to the county. Just get it done, find out what's wrong, and then let's go and do what we have to to correct it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Palmer.
Good evening. Robert Taylor, County resident. I want to kind of follow up along the lines of Mr. Palmer, although slightly different idea. But first, let me say this. You all, the council, cannot expect the auditor to do your job. Now, it's very obvious that the auditor was being stonewalled with regard to the Safari at the Quarry and possibly even the other audit. Now, she's acting as your agent in doing the audit. So essentially, you're the ones that are being stonewalled. Now, I think it was a good idea to table that first audit, the Safari. The purpose for which it was tabled, I don't think goes far enough. You need to get to the bottom and get the information. Like the gentleman just said, nobody knows because you were stonewalled. So what you need to do is you need to have a work session. We went through this about five years ago, and I sat where Mr. Benson sits now. And we did it the same way, with a work session. Make them come here. If they don't show up, then you publicize that. They're not doing it. The charter says they've got to provide you the information, then the executive branch, the executive. So that's what you need to do. Now, changing the subject, on these budget presentations, I don't know why we don't go, when we have this presentation, some discussion of the numbers, just general discussion, not questions. I mean, just to mention, there's a few things in here that, for example, planning and zoning, they're going from 2.1 million two years ago to 3.1 million. That's about a 50% increase. I mean, that's a big increase. May be justified. I understand we're going to have a separate planning commission. We're going to separate from the city. Maybe that's part of the reason. I don't know. I'm not saying that there's anything wrong with it, but I don't know. Now, yeah, we can listen to all your hearings that you have on the budget if you've got the hours to do it. You all get paid to sit there. We don't. So I think in the future, that's what you ought to do, particularly on these big items. And I would just wrap up by saying, the Board of Education, yeah, they're going up, but they're not going up anywhere near in percentage terms what some of these other departments are. I just mentioned one. Another one is the Planning and Zoning Commission. And we need more information. There's no notice, there's no letter from the executive on here. I understand that if you go on the website, you can get that. But we need more information about the budget. We can't really ask questions if we don't have the information. So let's, in the future, let's have more disclosure. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor.
Hi, Mikel Darlene, Wycomico County. I just want to start off and say thank you for tabling the audit tonight. I think it's a good decision. There's a lot that is not included and needs to be. This is twofold. One is for county taxpayers, and that's different than for my neighborhood, Shadow Hills. I will address that tonight. I think Mike spoke to many of the things that affect the county as a whole. I did want to say that we sent a certified letter to the executive. I'm going to read an abridged version now. This has been a nightmare for our community and only for standing up for what was promised when we worked with the previous council and the previous executive. We've done nothing other than ask for the plan to remain the same or for it at least to have us at the table if it changes. This abridged version is, ma'am executive, the Shadow Hills Homeowners Association expresses our grave concern regarding your statements and actions concerning Conley Mill Park and the Safari at the Quarry initiative. We strongly object to your response to the internal audit, finding it willfully misleading, slanderous, and damaging to our community and property values. This letter serves as our formal protest. Despite numerous communications since September 2023, you continue to misrepresent our longstanding concerns about the park's preservation. Your claims that our concerns are recent and solely about Jeep events are false. Your responses to our emails have been dismissive and derogatory. You falsely claim opposition to Safari at the Quarry is limited to Shadow Hills residents despite clear evidence otherwise. Your assertion that the previous county council killed the park is demonstrably false, as shown by years of official county documents. Your removal of the park from the capital improvement plan without public input raises serious transparency concerns. While we appreciate its restoration, this doesn't undo the harm inflicted upon our community for advocating for the original promise made upon the land's donation. We strongly object to your claims of adequate information sharing. Our attempts to obtain information have been met with stonewalling and falsehoods. Your characterization of our community is intentionally harmful, is inaccurate, and inflammatory. We have received only admonishment for exercising our free speech and raising legitimate concerns about a project threatening a promised park and environmental resources. We are deeply troubled by your disregard for environmental agencies, impacted stakeholders, and by your personal attacks. Your rhetoric has created a hostile environment and broken trust with your constituents. We urge you to cease this unethical behavior, stop spreading false narratives, and work with us and other stakeholders towards a solution that respects the environment and the community's promise. We support Councilman Wynn's proposal to convert program open space designation to Conley Mill. We also request you retract your response to the internal audit until you work with us to resolve these grievances. No constituent should face such abuse. We ask you to right these wrongs and repair the damage caused. Thank you.
Hi, Holly Kimball, Wycomico County. I know we've been told that the, I think the executive office doesn't really want to talk about this anymore, but we're going to keep talking about our side of it just because this is a microcosm of other issues. So what we saw today, what I see in that audit, and I am a CPA, but I'm not speaking formally as a CPA today. I did provide attestation work to large banks, to Wall Street, to investment companies all across the world. And so while that is like a level below an audit, it's very similar. The information provided here is a joke. Okay, I'm sorry, but company provided or vendor provided information that has no merit, no documentation, nothing. I think our internal auditor did the best she can with working with nothing. I really don't, I do. I mean, she's nodding her head because she knows it's correct. Like, you can't, like, what do you even say about this stuff? And if the public, I hope the public reads that because this audit report might seem not that important to somebody, but if this is the kind of stuff that we do around here, where's the money going? You know, Mike speaks with a lot of passion about this. I try to have a calmer tone, but he's not wrong. The trails that were created, you know, the equipment that was used out there, you know, the vendor bragged about the two-year time period that they worked on that site to get that site ready. Where is that in here? And I'll tell you, the aerial photographs of that property from 1988 to 2018 all look about the same. Okay? And then suddenly, guess what? You got about a 50-foot road of trees cut through where what used to be a tiny little walking trail, canopied with trees, is now a 50-foot-wide vehicle trail. Okay? The satellites don't lie. That happened on county time, right? Didn't happen, like, we got that land in 2019, right? In 2019, it looks the same until suddenly you have these. And, you know, we know what happened out there. So there's numbers missing from that report, too. There's expenses that aren't on there. I think it speaks for itself that it's just not valid. It's not credible. And my neighborhood's name is in that report that we're to blame for legal costs and for all sorts of things, for the regulatory agencies having to come out there, had this project come before the council like it should have. Attorney's fees would have been spared. Regulatory agencies actually should have already been consulted before any of it ever happened anyway. That should have happened. We feel like we provided the due diligence list that should have been already taken care of. That's not our fault, right? That should have take, that should have just happened anyway. I think it was $2,800 or something of lawyer's fees for being here at council. Again, had a council presentation happened and the community been consulted, a discussion could have happened. All of it could have been avoided. And that was, the council was avoided on purpose. We know that.
Thank you, Ms. Kimball.
Jim Atkins, Wycomico County. Want to talk about the budget a little bit. First, I want to congratulate the Board of Ed for getting what they asked for and hope they continue to get what they asked for. Want to talk about the three largest categories in the 26th budget. The first highest category is the Board of Ed, which it should be, no problem with that. The second highest is public safety. It's 60 and 1/2 million. No problem with that. The third highest item in the budget is miscellaneous. $29.8 million of miscellaneous. I'll leave it there. You can figure that out. Now that we've got a balanced budget proposal, please don't accept it. There are many items in this budget that can be adjusted, eliminated. You have 32 proposed pay raises above 10%. 10 of those are above 20%. One of them is at 31%. Anybody in this room would love to get a 31% raise. I don't think that the people getting 10, 20, and 31%, if the working employees are getting 5, should get more than 5. You know, what's good for the goose, good for the gander. Something we all heard a long time ago. There are some people in the budget who are not getting a raise at all, supposedly because of the steps and the categories and all this accounting noise. But everyone should be receiving a cost of living increase, which is the first raise that's happening on July 1st. Anyone who does not receive a cost of living increase is getting a cut in pay because their buying power is being reduced. So please look at that, at the top of that. The budget books, I realize a lot of people don't look at them, but the council got a budget proposal that was 232 pages long. The public got a budget proposal that was 50 pages long. Public doesn't have a clue what's in that budget. So if you can get 232 pages, maybe they can, next year, can put the same amount of pages on the website so that the public can see it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Atkins. The public comments. Seeing that concludes public comments. Council comments. Joe?
Yeah. I want to thank our internal auditor for her diligence. I know it's got to be frustrating when you try to get information and you're stonewalled. And on the other side of that story, you have an elected official that keeps preaching transparency all the time. I want to go back. Mr. Palmer mentioned the forensic auditor, and I mentioned the landfill theft we had a few years ago. We called in a forensic auditor. He's actually the one that recommended that we have an internal auditor. But I remember him sitting at that table. We had thousands, maybe hundreds of thousands of dollars stolen from this county from a small-time operator. This guy that owned some dump trucks and some backhoes. He got in collusion with somebody at the landfill. The forensic auditor sat at that table, and he said, you know what? He said, if Wycomico County kept as good a books as the fellow that stole from you did, you'd never been stolen from. I'll never forget that statement. He said he had it all wrote down. He said he handed us the book. He says, you didn't know what you lost. He knew what he took.
It's very disgusting when you open up an audit. And I'm not a finance guy, but I love reading audits. And what got me loving reading them is that from back then, when that happened, back in 2008, I think it was, it was very interesting. And when I read these things, I'd rather read an audit than a, you know, than a Reader's Digest almost. But it's disgusting to have to beg and plead to get information, especially when it's taxpayers' money that's being spent. That's the big problem. It's not just one person's money. It's everybody's money that's been put together that's being spent. So that's all I got to say. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, everybody, for being here.
Thank you, Kelsin Harley. Josh?
Yeah, just thank you, everyone, for being here tonight. And also thanks for everyone who attended my District 4 Town Hall a couple of weeks ago. And special thanks to Vice President Merritt for stopping by. I appreciate that. I just wanted to speak on one thing, just the Safari at the Quarry audit situation. I didn't want to table this because tabling immediately ends debate. And I didn't get a chance to actually have any questions or comments on it, so.
Time to.
That's okay. I'll say a couple now, and we'll wait till on the next one. But as soon as I saw the first Safari at the Quarry piece that came out, as soon as we mentioned, we understood, oh, where's the contract? The very first thing we heard was, well, it's going to be 10% of revenue. That's going to be the basis of the amount of money that the county would get. You know, no one would ever enter into a contract like that. There's no way that that's ever going to give you any kind of real results or understanding. And the truth is, we're never going to have an understanding of what happened other than how much money went in or out. And I would love for us to have more information, but ultimately, I guess the question is to what end? We need to change systems so these things don't happen again. That's at least where my mind is at. Yeah, and I don't know what's going to come of it, obviously. But I do want to say, of course, I appreciate the internal auditor actually trying to take, at least put some sunlight on the issue formally through the county. She, thank you, Andre, for doing so. But I just want to underscore, this is one of those situations where it's just best that we not get into these situations in the first place because there's no way that we're ever really going to have a full, complete story. But I hope that we do get a better story. And the only thing I'll say also on Andre's report, and it gets you a chance to say it, but in your conclusion, the very first sentence says specifically, "For events like these at this property going forward." And, you know, I think the narrative in general, we should not be having properties at this, or events at this property regardless. And maybe that's part of that narrative that maybe we should update. But at the end of the day, I don't know that we're going to get the information we want. Let's just make sure these things never happen again. Let's put the right systems in place so they don't happen like that. Thank you.
It's been a nice night. There's a lot of information came at us. I think, I think, I think things are looking good for possibly that redesignation for the Conley Mill. the Collie Mill. I'm hopeful that, that we can make that work, and we'll see, we'll see what happens. That's all I've got.
I always want to thank everybody coming out tonight. Been a long day for everybody. Appreciate you coming out and listening to all this. I'm not going to break tradition. I'm going to talk about Safari at the Quarry, too. This event started with a 364-day MOU that was created deliberately to circumvent the council approval process. There was no business plan, so right there, it was doomed from the start because you don't have a business plan for a project like that. It's anybody's guess where you're going to go. You just make it up as you go along. I cannot thank Ms. Chatel enough for the work that she put in to this audit, not getting all the information that she requested. But this council has spent the last two and a half years in that position, requesting information, not getting it, getting it incomplete, getting it late. We've had, right now, we're sitting on a series of unreplied emails from the last week. It's very, very hard to make a decision when you can't get the information that you need to make that decision, and we're, right now, we're making decisions on millions of dollars of taxpayers' money. I don't know about anybody else, but that's pretty important to me. We're going to continue to work together to make the best decisions possible, but getting information late or incomplete, I've heard the word stonewalling three or four times tonight. We've lived that for the past two and a half years, and it's very unfortunate. The other thing about Safari at the Quarry was, the public was notified by social media. The community right next to that property was never looped in on the discussion. We've seen that happen a couple of times since then, most recently at the Byer Refinery on Hickory Mill Road. Those residents were blindsided as well. Right now, we're talking about a state park down on the west side on Wettipkin Road. Those residents have no idea what's going on down there for a 400-acre state park. I find that rather incredible, that the public has no knowledge of these things. I, I hope we can work through this, but not giving up the information when it's asked for. It promotes, it gives the impression that you're hiding something, and it promotes mistrust to things that are not good. So I hope we can get to a better place, and I will close by saying that I fully support the full funding of the Board of Education, and I'm glad it's in the budget. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Shannon?
I want to say that, and I've always said this, communication. Everybody's not on Facebook. Everybody's not on Instagram. You have to look at the elderly. But communication is very important because if you communicate, tell the truth, and be honest, people would not be suspicious. I do not agree with the audit of Safari at the Quarry because if you're in business, you ought to know how to do the basic accounting, your profits and your loss, if you make a profit, your receipts, all that's part of your accounting. And if you just did that actual account, the person who had the affair, and if it was demanded by our administration, we wouldn't be sitting here arguing about the profit or loss. You communicate any changes made in a, in a neighborhood or community. You have to realize the trickle-down effect it may have on that community. That's why you need the communication. And we, I think we talk, some of us talk about transparency, but I think we just say that because it's what people want to hear, but we don't practice it. And you have to practice transparency. We're all not going to, not going to agree, but at least if you know you told the people what's going to happen, your duty is done. And then if there's any objections to what we told you, then it's when you come to the meetings and express your concern. But I think we need to stop fooling people and say transparency if we're not going to practice it. And we all should, I tell that stuff, you know? I try not to keep nothing. I tell people, don't tell me no secret because I might tell it. But the bottom line, we have to communicate with our constituents and the total community to let them know because you all are taxpayers. And I think everyone sitting here tonight is concerned about their particular neighborhood. And I do agree, and I'm happy to support the Board of Education with their, the MOE, what is it? Meth?
MOE.
MOE. Because I question, if we're not the lowest person on the totem pole, we're five, it's five counties below us, so we're steadily going up with our MOE, and I'm happy about that. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Shannon.
I would say, I also appreciate everybody coming out and the comments that were made. I took a couple of notes on some of them, so we do appreciate that, and it doesn't go on deaf ears. We will be addressing the salaries, Ms. Atkins, we certainly will. We are going to review this whole issue as far as the, the audit is concerned on the Safari at the Quarry. Going to try to see if we can't get you a full budget online. I just assumed that that was the one that was being put online. I don't know if there's any restrictions on what we are or not allowed to do. It's about 252 pages, so I don't know if it's a problem with downloading or, you know, putting it on the site, but we'll certainly see what we can do and get back to you with an answer on that. Now, tomorrow at 10:00 a.m., we will, there will be an announcement at the airport that we will be bringing in a new airlines that's going to go to Orlando. So that's going to be really great. We've, it's been a long process trying to make that happen, a lot of work and a lot of community support that really made that happen, a lot of investments from all around the Eastern Shore area, including Worcester County. So we really appreciate that. It's going to be 10:00 at the airport tomorrow where we're going to make that formal announcement. And there is going to be, as I understand it, DNR is going to have a public hearing about the Wettipquin State Park. It's a mystery. This is a mystery, but they are going to do that. I was trying to check my emails to see exactly when it is, but hopefully, we, we can try to see what we can do to, to announce it. DNR is handling it, but it may benefit us to actually put something in the paper to announce it, Mrs. Hurley, for what the minimal expense might be. I think it might be worthwhile, but I'm really upset that I couldn't find it. I was checking my emails. I'm not sure where, where it disappeared to, but at least DNR is going to come down to address that. I understand a contract hasn't been done yet on this state park, and we'll have to see how it plays out, so. Entertained motion to adjourn from legislative session to go into open work session followed by a closed work session pursuant to the local government article, section 3-305B1, to discuss a personnel matter pertaining to the appointment of an Assistant Director of Administration to protect the privacy of the individual.
Second?
Second.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Post.
Legislative meeting is adjourned. First item on the open work session is the presentation of a survey results and roadside litter and recycling in Wycomico County. This is a group that came to our last meeting. We held them here until 10:00 last time. They finally had to go, but glad to see everybody has returned. Bruce?
Bruce is not here. He's visiting his family.
Ah, you're subbing for him?
Much deserved. No, actually, I am, we're ready to go?
Not yet.
Not quite? Okay.
Did you have an honors research last night?
Say what again?
I had it that you had an honors research.
Tomorrow night.
It's tomorrow night?
Yeah. Back-to-back nights for these folks.
Okay.
And their peers.
Some reason, I had the wrong night.
Yeah.
I was there, but.
You went last night?
I went last night because I, I had, it was in my calendar last.
It's on Monday last night, too.
I'm so sorry about that.
It's okay.
It's Wednesday.
Yeah.
My apologies.
Okay, if you could, with the first work session from your left to right, state your name, if you could, for us, and whatever your position may be.
I'm Allison Jaeger. I'm a student at Salisbury University. I'm a sophomore, psychology major at the Clark Honors College.
My name's Emily Hoard. I'm a student at Salisbury University. I'm a sophomore in the Clark Honors College. I'm a chemistry major on the secondary education track.
And Ryan Weaver, professor at Salisbury University, and I teach specifically civic leadership in the interdisciplinary studies department, but also I'm in honors where I teach amazing students like this in the sophomore living, learning community. Basically, what that means is they live close together in Seagull Square, and they attend a class together, and that class happens to be the one I teach over two semesters. So these folks have had the honor, or maybe not, of spending two semesters with me consecutively. And you might also know me from the community as a nonprofit leader, community leader, and activist for almost 20 years in the community. We've partnered a lot with Chipman over the years and all sorts of wonderful organizations and so on and so forth. I'm just grateful you've given us some time to be here with you this evening. To my knowledge, this is the first group of students presenting before the county council in quite some time, if not ever, with regard to institutional review board research that we conducted in partnership with two county employees, and they are behind us back here. Mr. Michael Swayby and also Mrs. Jennifer Alberro were very supportive and a big part of the process with this survey overall. I'm going to allow the students to do most of the talking, but I do want to make sure you know that we conducted this survey in regard to the IRB processes. Again, that's institutional review board. That means that when we're conducting any sort of human research, we do our best to follow common practices to make sure that that data is handled properly. It's an anonymous survey, and that data will live with me. So these students will move on in about two weeks from my course, but any questions about this data can be directed my direction. This report right here will live in the public record, and you can reach out to me following that regarding the data, anything along those lines. But the data and the survey is officially closed, so what we're presenting here is analysis. Tomorrow night, they will have a white paper, roughly 10 or so pages, white paper with recommendations based on the community feedback that we collected, and also breaks down the narrative a little further in that space. And that, again, that presentation will be tomorrow night at the college, so. I'll allow you two to get started. One other note is we do have seven members of students in the cohort, and last time we tried to come present, we had more than the two we have tonight. It's finals coming up and a lot of final projects happening, and so we were only able to bring these amazing two, but these two are two of the ones who've done quite a lot of the work with us, and so I think they're two of our best to, to present before you tonight. Also noting the interdisciplinarity of the cohort. I know environmental studies and environmental research is something the university is well-known for and, and to be credited for. We have of the seven, zero environmental studies majors or environmental, environmental science majors, so interdisciplinarity across the board was an important part of the research together in trying to understand those practices, leaning heavily on the two experts behind who deal with this on a daily basis as collaborators on the IRB. And without further ado, I will allow us to go to the, the abstract, if you don't mind. So our abstract here says that we collected data from all 17 of the zip codes in Wycomico County. 638 responses of the 702 were from Wycomico County. They indicated they live in those. I think the, the next few slides will outline that a little bit further, but our research specifically focused on the question of, is there a roadside litter problem according to our citizens in Wycomico County? I see nodding from you. We're going to let you know what our findings were. That's the starting point for any civic research and community-based research like this is, we can look and see that there's roadside litter and there are recycling concerns, but the question is, what does the community think? So with that, I turn it over to our students.
So the problem was that we figured out from our survey was that 90, over 93% of the participants in the survey did think that there was a significant problem with roadside litter in the county. And this is just a picture of an example of what you would see every day on the street. And then our demographics, we asked if they're a resident of Wycomico County, and 609 of the 702 responses did say yes, and some of the responses that did say no were students who were living on campus in the county for almost more than half of the year, so they were included with the yes. But then we did kind of a breakdown of the zip codes, and we did see a majority of the responses from Salisbury, but we did get responses from each zip code.
How did you distribute the survey?
Sorry?
How did you distribute the survey?
So we had help from our partners, but we also distributed it on campus. We sent out flyers, posted them all around the county with a link and a QR code for the survey.
Lot of emailing on Wycomico Clean's part. You mentioned Bruce earlier, not able to be here this evening, but Bruce and, and that team across the board that they, they're out there on the roads every weekend and in some weekdays, as you know, and they were big-time collaborators on this as well. And the last image was also from Wycomico Clean. The, that's one of the images that they have presented before council previously with their presentations. Yep.
So question six on the survey was, on a scale of one to five, how difficult is recycling for you in Wycomico County? And there was a pretty even distribution of scores on this. However, one of them, which was not difficult, was saying that it wasn't difficult at all, but the rest of the four, which were slightly neutral, somewhat, and extremely. So the participants did say that recycling was difficult to an extent. Then after that question, we asked an open-ended question, which is, what would make recycling easier for you in Wycomico County? That light blue part of the pie, it got cut off, but that was to accept more materials, which was about 7%, so like more types of plastics, electronics, batteries at different locations. 6.7% said public commitment, which includes commitment from people within the county themselves to actually recycle, and also knowing that the county is recycling what people are trying to recycle. We had 45.9%, so almost half of the participants saying they want more stations and they want to, the stations that were existed before to be restored. We had 7.7% of the participants say they want more education, which is education about the topic and education about what types of trash can be recycled. 7.1% said that they want just a broader thing of more affordable and easier options, and 25.9% said they want free curbside pickup. So the conclusions that we drew from this data were that the community wants drop-off locations, receptables, and stations. 45.9%, so almost half of the survey results, mentioned these specific key words, and 19% of those responses advocated for bringing back previous locations that need to be restored, and 11.6% of those specifically mentioned the location from the Wycomico County Civic Center.
Yeah, I answered that one 300 times.
So the image you're seeing on your screens right now and the screen up there is the locations of the convenience centers and recycling centers currently in the county. So the yellow dots indicate the convenience center locations, and the green are the recycling center locations. As you can tell, the recycling center locations are clustered in one specific area, whereas the convenience centers are spread out, but those convenience centers are very limited hours, usually during working hours, and they also are like limited in what materials they take. So certain centers only take certain materials.
Just, just a point of clarification, the, the convenience centers also do recycling as well. I don't know if you were aware of that. Okay, correct.
So we found through our results that the education about roadside litter, 12.1% agreed that it's a very important next step for this community. So it doesn't include just in the schools. Yes, those, having the programs in schools, like what is recycling and what can be recycled and what's recycled where is super important, but also like for adults who like don't really know, like. Yes, those having the programs in schools, like what is recycling and what can be recycled and what's recycled where is super important, but also like for adults who like don't really know like how to recycle, where to recycle, like having that is really important as well, like social media ad campaigns. Social media is huge nowadays. Good portion of our population has social media, so of some kind, Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, TikTok, like having those social media and it being super accessible to people is really important when it comes to recycling. And also having it in language, different languages, so Spanish, Haitian Creole, not just English, so.
Before we move from that, I want to note too with education that Jennifer Alberro does a phenomenal job with so much of the things she does and it will be remiss on us. She gave us a tour. If we didn't mention how engaging she is, how knowledgeable she is, she's an asset to the county. Just want to make sure that that's clear here. From our perspective, showed up in the classroom and, and alongside Mike and Michael Swayby is great too. But Jennifer does.
Jennifer's better.
Right.
I say that because Mike was in the back and I could say.
Sorry, Mike, I said, I said, right. But I, I mean, you know, you're both great, but you know, I just think it's important to say like with, with regard to the education piece, a future educator sitting to my right here in the center with Emily, she's thinking about chemistry and that's what she's studying to take into the secondary ed programs. And so just remembering that from that perspective, here's a future educator saying this is important. And she was fascinated by some of the wonderful things that, that Jennifer does with, with all sorts of different products and ways to illustrate that. I know we can't do tours for every kid in the county necessarily. But we can definitely bring those to them. And I just think it's important to note in the languages that we're including as many people as possible in that process. And not othering, but bringing people into that dynamic. And one way to do that, a super simple way is make sure that it's all in the languages that are inclusive. We didn't mention Portuguese, Korean in the county. Also, you know, we know that, that, that we're just trying to, to say clearly translation services cost extra money, but it's part of a budgeting process that you're in now. Those sorts of things are super, super important. And it doesn't take much more time to do that with chat GPT. And making sure that we're using AI to help us include the largest numbers of people. The greatest leaders do that. Include the largest number of people as possible. And we have a wonderfully diverse county, so it's important to remember that in our educational resources as well. Carry on.
Um, we also find that 28% of residents supported increased enforcement of some kind for recycling, whether it be fines, ticketing, policing, more surveillance. We even had someone mention arrest. So again, just enforcing roadside litter policies in the county. Because I've driven around the county and I've seen litter all over the roads here. It's a problem. And I feel like there's not a lot being done about it, so.
This is really, really good. First of all, even your first page, I didn't know there were 17 zip codes in Wacomico County.
That's not including the postal codes, right? So like the, the actual locations where it's a post office. Right. But so that's just the 17 where people live.
But I thought it was surprising in, in it. Are you, you go ahead. I don't want to talk yet. I don't want to interrupt if you, go ahead.
So just overall summary, so we found that key concerns, limited access to recycling centers was one. There's also high permit costs for recycling if people use like a private service. Or just insufficient public awareness about it. So again, recite expanding access, improving the outreach or whatever, and then just increasing enforcement of these regulations. Also just getting people to volunteer. Me, Wacomico Clean does that when they do it. And it's just amazing. Like we've wanted to go out and recycle and work with them.
And they have expanded to university students more and more. And that, that is an effort that I'm continuing to push out throughout. So we, we've had several of those partnerships recently this semester, and we're talking about expanding those in the future. Do you want to talk about future research that it could include?
So in the future, we do want to expand. So our current survey was 18 and over. All adults in the county were open to take it. But in the future, we want to expand to teenagers as well. Teenagers are super important to this county and they deserve to have a voice in the county. Like I remember when I was a teenager. I wanted to have some say on some decisions being made where I'm from. So yeah, I mean, having them have some influence and in the county with decisions, especially something so important to the environment, like keeping it clean. And just over, I'll thank you two, our leaders, Dr. Weaver, or Professor Weaver. And just you all for listening and.
We appreciate you being here and we appreciate you taking the time to do the report. I mean, it was a very good report. It's very concise. I think you covered all the issues and actually what you were discussing in this paper are things that we have discussed here on numerous occasions. And we've talked to Mrs. Alberro about it as well, and Mr. Swayby about it. When they were, were here just not too long ago. So the fact that you've taken this on and honestly, at your age, I'm shocked. So, but it's great. Part of what I took away was the fact that only 20% of residents found that it wasn't difficult to recycle, you know? And then they have the other 80%. So there is an issue that we need to address. And what we primarily focused on here, just within the last year was yet we did feel that the, the recycling stations needed to be restored. They were pulled and we were just in awe. We woke up and all of a sudden the recycling stations were gone. And it's like, where, where, what happened? And these were, these were visited quite often. So the fact that 46% of the people say restore these, I'm you're validating, I think, what we have been just talking about here for so long. So that's, that's what I think the impact of this really is. And the education and the, the enforcement issue. Enforcement is tough. Enforcement is tough because you know, you can find an address in the bag, but that doesn't always nail it. And you know, Sheriff Lewis is very much aware of this and would like to address this as much as any of the rest of us. Education is sort of a bit more difficult to get your head around is how, how we're really going to do it. People are going to pay attention. I really feel sometimes that the stick works better than the carrot. I just do. So we'll have to see though, but Josh.
Yeah. And of course, thank you, Professor Weaver and you know, Allison, Emily, appreciate to be in there. And I do, of course, I want to echo the thank you, Ms. Alberro. And you really do amazing job. We do appreciate it. Mike.
You're here.
The one thing I wanted to get back to you, just on the question six, the survey results as far as the you know, restoring the stations. 46% of respondents you know, saying that. Did you break those apart by zip code? And I know that maybe that's not quite as statistically significant, but you know, the one of the very first, when we very, when we first found out that the the civic center location that was there was going to be closed. You know, the, the, the comment that came out was, oh, well, the city of Salisbury already does recycling. We don't have to worry about this. They do it on their own. But of course, as we know, you know, much of the city and the county, it's, you know, there's squished, it's like swiss cheese. There's giant holes in there. And in fact, I think the Salisbury University is actually in the county, not in the city, if I'm correct.
Correct.
So, you know, it'd be nice to find out, you know, the, the, obviously the the city needs a lot more ability. We, we've seen an increase in roadside trash or other kind of issues like that since the closure of that other, the other facilities. And I think there's anything we can do to help make that. If we can provide, if you can provide more data to show that that's the case, I think that that could be helpful. So I don't know. I'll leave it there.
May I ask a question live?
Yeah.
Ally, do you know if we've already done that with that 46% in the white paper?
I don't think we've done the white paper yet, but we can definitely add that. We do have the ability to see which zip codes did say.
So we will, we have class tomorrow morning, 9:30 AM. So we'll sit down tomorrow morning and we'll get a look at that together and include that in the white paper and we'll get that in the final draft of the white paper so that you all can see that. I think that would be beneficial. Good idea. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your work you've done. This recycling stations, a little story. I lived near the Powellville transfer station that has a recycling station. It's got a dirt lane going into it. Now I remember the reason they closed the recycling stations is they said that trash was around them and it costs too much. The folks that run the recycling, the transfer station down to Powellville do an excellent job of keeping it looking good, but somebody was complaining about the road not being paved. I said, you better be careful. I said, complaining that they might close it. Take it away. You know, that's what happened to the other ones, you know, when they, people complained about trash being around them. That's what happens, seems like with this administration. So trash is a problem. I think it's a culture of people anymore. You know, they, they, they don't have the respect that they had. People used to say to me, he says, you got all these soda cans and beer cans in the back of your pickup. I said, well, I don't litter. I just put them in the back of my pickup. Anyway. But we've got in the budget to raise the tipping fees at the landfill. They didn't put in there to raise the sticker fees, I understand, correct?
I think just tipping.
Just the tipping fees, but that means that the private haulers are going to have to raise their fees. And it only takes one person or two people that can't pay that bill. First thing you know, they're dumping their trash along the road. So every time you raise the tipping fees at the landfill, you're going to end up with more trash on the road. You know, that's, I've been saying that for a long time.
I think that's what Bruce Robson and Wacomico Clean volunteers are finding across the board from mattresses to all sorts of, you saw the tires there, but there's documentation every weekend with the pounds and pounds of trash that they're collecting and they're keeping that data as they go. But that's also part of, of why community based research with Salisbury University students and professors is super important. Is because it actually reinforces these ideas of, well, is there a problem, right? So when we're approached about this question of would you investigate? Well, the first question becomes, what is the community think? Is there a problem? Not, yeah, I can see it with my eyes as a Wacomico County and city resident. But our students don't often leave campus all the time, and so they may not always see that. And so then how do we then get out in the community and ask that question? And so I just would continue to say, I mean, through the process, now you have the data and that's why we present it to you. So you can then use that accordingly and take those next steps, whether that is tipping fee adjustments or whatever that would be and paying attention to what that is. Yeah. Thank you very much, Mr. Councilman.
I just want to make you aware of, before COVID, we had inmates would pick up trash. People, if the community service, they needed service hours. They would go to the corrections and they would get picked up and they'd go around, pick up trash or cut the grass or whatever. That's all kind of stopped because of, I guess, COVID. And I'm hoping we can work on trying to get something put together that we can get some of those, at least somebody out there to pick up the trash that needs community service hours. So just so you're aware that that's another big reason why there's trash everywhere. It's because nobody's picking it up anymore. Besides, besides Wacomico Clean, I don't want to.
Oh, yeah, sure.
You know?
Well, they had stated that initially because of COVID, what they did was they put ankle bracelets on all the prisoners and let them go home. Well, before they could get out. And so they would say, yeah, we want to get out. I think they gave them a day off for every day they were out in the road working. But, but they also got out of, out of the, out of the jail, right? Well, now they're home with ankle bracelets. So do they want to go out on the road and pick up trash? Not so inclined, as I understand. And I don't know, Mr. Swayby, we'd have to have the conversation another time. I also was told more recently that the, the inmates have been now transferred from doing recycling to working at the landfill specifically. As opposed to being on the roads. And I don't know what the better use might be. Of course, we would leave that up to you, but it would be nice to get them on the roads and that way they may not have to, you know, they, we could, we may not have as big a problem at the landfill if we can nip it in the bud on the roads. But I don't know what their job responsibility is now. But maybe another time.
Just briefly.
Could you use that mic up there? That'd be great.
Just briefly to respond to that, Mr. President, the inmates are a key part of the business model at the landfill for recycling. You know, when we bring the open tops in from the convenience centers and the recycling centers. And they're bringing everything from bottles to cans to cardboard, you name it. We separate out whatever we don't have a recycling market for. And that physical separation and stockpiling and staging to compile enough quantity to be able to sell it on the market, whether it's, you know, compressed cardboard or plastic bottles or what have you. They are, they're the absolute key to that operation. I mean, it's astounding how inexpensively we accomplish that. And a loss there would be a huge loss.
I, I understand that. I remember, we did a tour with Ms. Alberro and we saw there's that five of them, I believe, in the recycling where they were sorting. But I was under the impression that we had some that were sorting, but we could also have some that are out in, on the road and not sacrifice one for the other.
We could take additional people. Is that what you're saying basically? Yes. We could, we could, we could look into that certainly.
Thank you. Do you have a question?
Yeah, I have a question. I, I was talking to one of our local judges one morning in the coffee shop and my question was when they have somebody with a minor offense, they don't want to send to jail, which, you know, they're going to give them probation or something. I said, couldn't you, could you not send them you know, to the county to do some community service, like a day a month or two days a month? They, you know, would, would you do that? And they said, well, there's a possi, he said, there's a possibility we could do that if we could work out a system. So I don't know whether it could be something like that could be worked, you know, to get more people out on the road picking up trash.
We actually do get, the courts send us from, I don't know whether it's drug court or what, but it's minor infractions where they just have to do community service. And they actually do come, Steve Chamberlain takes care of that. But they'll come and spend a Saturday or Sunday picking up trash, usually around the landfill. It would be great if we could get them involved with Wacomico Clean as well. But, but we do currently, there just aren't a whole lot of people that are coming to us in that form yet.
How many do you get a, a month or a week?
I would say maybe three.
Oh, wow. There's got to be more people than that.
Right. I agree. I agree.
If we could find a way to put that on steroids, that would be really good. Yeah.
Make it part of every sentence.
Excuse me?
Make it part of every sentence. Yeah. I mean, you know, it's, it's a minor thing, but it would do a lot of good for the county, obviously.
Well, there was a period of time prior to COVID that we were getting we'd get, you know, 10 inmates on any given day, but we've only been getting anywhere from three to five max anymore. So it would, it would make a huge difference.
Shout a week early, but you got to pick up trash for a week. Okay, thank you.
Again, we really appreciate the fact that you brought this to light. So we, we do understand that, yes, there is, the citizens are as concerned as we are with this. The biggest thing I guess we have to try to avoid is reinventing the wheel. So now we have to figure out maybe how to address it and what's the most successful means. I don't know what other communities in the country might be doing to have any success. Did you come across that in any part of what you reviewed? I guess most of yours was just in reviewing Wacomico County?
Did you come across anything? You too. So usually in the class, when we're doing primary research, where we're the ones doing the research, we do a little bit of, that's a secondary research, seeing what others are doing. But in this one, we really, because we wanted to get so many responses fast, we moved as quick as possible. In fact, we were collecting data before the semester even started. We had over 100 responses because of things before students came back for the, the spring semester. So I don't know that we dug into that too much unless you came across anything.
No, and I didn't mean to put you on.
No, that's great. No, it's a good point.
I just didn't know if, in how you pursue this in, within the next year, so whether that can be a focus.
Yeah. So we'll add that to the future research section in the white paper as well as, because what we're hoping to happen with that, so my, my world will not probably collide again with roadside litter right away. With the different research projects I already have going. But what we hope will happen is those environmental studies, environmental science students looking for a project that they can pick up this primary research and run with it. So as you're interacting with students, professors, as I'm doing the same, we can hope to inspire and then they can use this white paper and build on top of that. And so that's where this idea, I'm going to write that down. We'll make sure it ends up in the white paper. Not only researching among those under the age of 18, because we think our teenagers would have a lot to say about roadside litter and recycling, but then also this idea as well. It's a, it's a really good idea. Secondary research, what other community is doing, how can we build on top of that?
Okay, very good.
Great idea.
Any other questions? Sorry to keep you at the last meeting so late. Yeah, we can't always predict that.
No, it's all right. It's budget season.
We're glad you came back.
And it's a civic process. It was learning for them and for their peers. And we're just really grateful you've partnered with us and allowed us this forum to sit before you, each honorable, serving our community the way you do. So thank you for what you're doing and. So thank you for what you're doing and thanks for collaborating with, with community people like me and, and these amazing students.
Allison, Emily, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Professor Weaver.
Thank you.
We appreciate you guys being here.
Sometimes we get here and just don't want to leave.
Thank you. So Barrow, thank you for being here. Mr. Sfaby, glad you came in. The next work session we have is lease and operating agreement with Azure Flight Support. This is a fixed base operation that we've been attempting to attract in Wycomico County for some time now. Mr. Rudy, doing really good work.
Good evening, Tony Rudy Airport Director. So we've been probably, I would say for about a year and a half now, you know, we've been aware that Bayland Aviation's long lease agreement is finally coming to an end. So I did some kind of initial exploring. I talked to people in the industry who actually run FBOs that I've met over the years and have enjoyed working with, to get some preliminary information from them and see how we go about the process of attracting a new FBO. And it wasn't before too long, I realized that it's kind of been over my head as well as couldn't find any volunteers to, to help out in this process. But I was able to locate a consultant who, who's been really good at helping us out with this whole process. And it's, it's been going on for over a year now. So he does this for, for many other airports. He does a lot of lease and operating agreements, RFPs and such. So when I talked to him, we had a good initial conversation and we felt the, the best way to find out what worked best for Salisbury was not to jump right into an RFP, but put out a request for information from the businesses that may want to do business here or just may want to volunteer their information to help us make educated choices on, on how we go about the RFP process. So that took a while to compile. We had, I believe it was about six fixed based operators that participated in that process, gathered a lot of good information, kind of enlightened us, found, you know, gave us a good idea of what, what they would be looking for as far as running fixed based operation at the airport, what kind of services they could provide, what kind of facilities they would need or would need to develop and kind of the timeframe for that. So once we were finished with the RFI process, we developed our request for, for proposals based on that information we gathered. And again, it kind of took into consideration all of that input and, and what would be best for not just the airport, but our customers, the tenants at the airport, our hangar tenants, our, you know, corporate aircraft that come in, private aircraft that come in, the airlines. So we took all of that information and, and really considered that and put together, I think what was really, a really good RFP. We advertised that. We had, we had a pre-proposal meeting, answered questions, and we had actually two, two actual proposals and one letter that declined to submit a proposal. So we evaluated those two proposals separately. One was from, and actually a larger, larger FBO chain, which I was, I thought I would be more impressed with, but after sorting through them and looking at Azores, Azores really had no exceptions to our proposal. And, and they were willing to go with, with the operating agreement that we had presented without any changes. So they're a, they're a top notch existing fixed base operator, been in business for quite a few years now, and they're really excited to come to the airport and give us a good product, including investing a little over $8 million in the airport in the next few years, building facilities, building a new general aviation terminal, a new maintenance hangar, and also do aircraft storage hangar. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions?
So if we go through with this tonight, when, when will they actually be in business?
July 1st is when they would start. Bayland Aviation's agreement expires June 30th.
Take over Bayline's facilities until moving to Bayline's building and stuff like that?
So they will, in order to be ready to start on day one, they're going to bring a temporary office trailer on the airport.
Okay.
They're also going to start immediately on July 1st, start doing office renovations of that building. So they're, they're investing in existing facilities, including the, the general aviation terminal and two of our hangars.
They're going to use the same tanks or are they going to replace the tanks at some point?
So the airport has a new fuel farm system that's, it's being installed as we speak. Well, they're probably not working right this hour, but that will be up and ready to go in, at the end of May or early June. So they'll be taking that facility, using it for their operation and, and we get rent payments on that facility as well.
I thought, I thought everything was really good. I liked the, with the tenant improvements, I think that's always a big plus, a really big plus. Honestly, it's been a long time just trying to get the right fit, so I'm, I'm very excited about this. So you said, beginning of July?
July 1st, yes. Yeah, no, we're, we're excited. I, I think their proposal was, well, was excellent because they didn't have any exceptions to what, what we saw the need for. And they're, they're a very professional group and they've been up here quite regularly, getting ready to, to get this started.
I was just asking, where, where do we go from here?
So this does require a public hearing, so that will be held on May the 20th at 10 a.m.
But we could probably do the public hearing and the, and the resolution all at the same time.
Correct.
Good. To help expedite it, provided that the council wants to go forward with it. Yeah. All right. Anything else you want to add?
If you have any questions, any other questions for me, or if you want to speak to them, I could certainly get ahold of them.
Sounds good.
They'd be willing to come up.
All right. All right, Tony. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And such. Next item we have is establishing a compensation allowance commission, which is required. And.
Mr. President, you can give a summary. So every four years, under the Wycomico County Charter, the county council is required to establish a compensation allowance commission by law. This commission is to recommend compensation allowances from members of the county council as well as the county executive. Some of the key requirements are, the commission must be appointed and begin to work within 15 days after the start of the fourth year of the current council's term. For the present council's term, that began on December the 6th of 2022. So the fourth year begins December the 6th, 2025. The commission will review compensation allowances and submit its determination to the county council by resolution. And then upon receipt of the resolution, the council may approve, reduce, or reject the commission's recommendations, but you cannot increase any of the recommended amounts. Any changes to compensation must be enacted by a bill adopted prior to the election of the next council and will take effect only for the next council's term. For the sheriff's salary, that is governed by Section 2-309 of the Corson Judicial Proceedings Article of the Annotated Code of Maryland, which states that the sheriff shall receive an annual salary of the greater of $58,000 in calendar year 1998 and thereafter, or the salary set by the county before the term, the county council before the start of the term of office. The charter only requires the compensation allowance commission to review the compensation of the council and the county executive, but historically, the commission has reviewed and made recommendations for the sheriff as well. So to comply with the timeline in the charter, the council needs to advertise for nominees and appoint members to the commission no later than June 17th. And this will just ensure that the commission has time to do their research and write up their report, you know, have it submitted within the window following the December 6th timeline. And so if you agree with that process, we can go ahead and start the advertising tomorrow and we can publish that in the Salisbury Independent as well as on the county's website.
Did you say how many people?
I, I did not say, and I don't believe the charter dictates how many people. We can certainly go back and look at the prior commissions and see how many people were appointed to those and use that as a guide.
I think, I think the way we did it before, each council member picks a person, I believe.
I don't remember. Yeah. I was wondering the same thing, but I don't remember.
Yeah, I think each council member picked a person unless they didn't have anybody that, that would, would do it and then another council member brought somebody in. I think that's how we've done it before.
If you could find out, Miss Hurley, to see how we did it last time, I'm sure minutes would show that.
I know we did that at least once or twice anyway.
So we'll get, we'll get started.
Yes.
Good. Sounds good. We will adjourn from open work session and go into closed work session. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.